... meeting to order. Thank you, thank you, time to come out. Don us today. This is the second final public hearing. Three ordinances. Want to address them this order. Start with the LDR first. Will address the leave no trace, second. Close out with the RV ordinance. Attorney, you ready?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Thank you. LDR now.
Yes, sir. Back on January 5th, the first advertisement for these public hearings was run in the News Herald. It was consistent with Florida statute 125. The second advertisement ran on the 19th of January. As you all Commissioners know, on the 13th of January, you had your first public hearing on the advertised proposed ordinances. Consistent with the Florida statute, one was scheduled for the night, barring a special vote of the Commission, and that's why we're gathering tonight at 5:01 for the public's participation. The first ordinance for the second public hearing this evening, and I'm going to read it by title without permission of the Commission. It reads as follows. It's an ordinance of Gulf County, Florida, per the requirements of Florida statute 163, subsection 3201, to adopt land development regulations and the requirements of Florida statute 163, for the land development regulations to be consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, providing for repeal or severability modifications that may arise from consideration at the public hearing, and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, you each have a copy of that land development regulation amendment in front of you, and I will try to restate the general comments I provided to you all on January 13th. Over the holiday break, the Administrator, the Administration, the Planning Department, myself, worked with the Article 2 to try to provide both the community with further clarification as to the process and the authority for both the county and the Planning Board. Historically, as it's referenced, and in the actual amendments, anything that's underlined is added, anything that has a strike through is deleted. And as you go through, and as you've all reviewed it, the additions and the clarifications restate the authority that rests with you all as the Board of County Commissioners for development orders, and the Planning, Development, and Review Board is an advisory and a recommendation body, advisory board for you all to review these development applications. The changes are for further clarity, consistent with the original LDRs that were adopted over 20 years ago. So I'll be happy to answer any questions and follow in the Board's comments. If you would, please open it to the public for the second public hearing.
Any questions, Board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have a question, but I do have, I would like to renew my comments that I made at the first reading of this ordinance. I won't go through them all as I did at the last meeting, and the Board was not interested in entertaining those changes, but I will renew that I believe while we are making changes to these LDRs, I don't have a problem with the changes we've made, but I think that we need to make some additional changes. We need to tighten up the process regarding variances and minor replats, and the existing LDRs have resulted in litigation against this county, and to me, this is the time for us to do the work and clean up the language.
This time, I want to the public, this is only LDR now. One wishes, I have one here on RV, we'll get there. Forward. Can be ready. Anyone in the back, we're addressing the LDR, the final law of public hearing on the LDR. If anyone out in the hallway wishes to come before the Board, welcome. Let me say this, if someone comes up, and I've seen this happen a lot of times, and they say basically, well, I don't, we don't need to hear, we will necessarily, we're not denying anybody, there's no point going over the same thing three or four times. So if we have some people there, that's, all that does is just cause more confusion. So at this time, floor is open for anyone that wants to make any comments or address any issues on the LDR. Anyone? Anyone?
I wouldn't.
Do what? You do? Wait, we got anyone in the audience? I need to, I need to, somebody's got a, you do, all right, come on. Couldn't tell if he was.
I thought everybody was asleep for a minute there when you asked who had comments. Tom Greenie, 8513 Trade Winds Drive, Fort St. Joe, Florida, which is actually, I live on the beach. I want to, I want to open a discussion with you, and expressing my opinion, a little bit of history, but I just wanted to discuss it. Referencing where Commissioner Bryan just said, there's a history which got us to this point, and the history goes back to a nine-foot variance on a nine-and-a-half-foot setback out on the beach in front of Veterans Park. We're all aware of that, read the paper, we saw the lawsuit, and the judge came back and said, it's quashed for procedural issues and so on. He listed a few things he thought were questionable, but said, I'm not going to rule on those right now. I want you to go back to the PDRB and go through the process correctly, and you'll come up with what I think is probably legal, but I added that, that you'll come up with a, with a reasonable approach as variance. My issue then, and my issue now in looking at this, is the PDRB rules and the thing that, those points which allow them to grant an exception to the LDRs are so general, you ought not have an LDR. You don't need a PRDB, you ought not have LDRs. And specifically, what I want to talk about is, the point I want to make is, and everybody out here should pay attention to this issue, if you can grant a nine-foot variance to a nine-and-a-half-foot setback, why have them? Why have setbacks? Why have a process? If the law allows you to do that. This, in my opinion, this LDR and the rules for variance is kind of like the Constitution, state or federal. It allows things to happen, but it doesn't allow the government to do whatever it wants to do. It's bound by the same rules and the same laws, the same issues that everybody else has. That's what, that's why when your LDR spells out possible reasons for variance, it used to say and, 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 and. You've written it to where it says or, 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 which is how it got the nine-foot variance on a nine-foot, half-foot setback to start with. Now, this deals right now with the particular area of St. Joe Beach, and I understand that. That's the way it is. If you live on Cape San Blas, I will refer you a quick, quick thought back to about six years ago, when a group of people, I'll call them the Cabal, but anybody can call them what they want to, came in here and tried to get the density changed on Cape San Blas. You're next, Cape San Blas, if you live on Cape San Blas, and you think that granting a nine-foot variance on a nine-and-a-half-foot setback on St. Joe Beach is a precedent that you're all going to see in the coming years, these are desirable properties, it's going to happen, if we, if these LDRs go this flexible.
Okay. One more. Got a time.
Motion to extend, do you need time?
I have.
I think we probably.
You got my gist, right?
Yes, I think so.
And this is a, this is a serious issue.
Very serious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Greenie.
Barbara Radcliffe, I'll be a little brief, more brief than Tom was. By changing the ands to ors, he's correct, you might as well not have it, because you're going to make variance the rule, not the exception. And this will come back to bite you. Thank you.
My name is John Arnold, I'm from 9318, West Highway 98, Beacon Hill. I just got a question on how you can deny a variance and give a variance, deny somebody else a variance. I mean, what gives, these people, they purchased this property, these properties, when you purchase a piece of property, on your deed it has restrictions, and the county has their ordinances or their building regulations. When they purchased a piece of property, they should have done their research and found out what the restrictions are, and when they do their planning, most time when somebody buys a piece of property, they have a plan in mind. They need to do their research on their plan and on their property that they're purchasing, and making sure that piece of property is adequate for what they're purchasing it for, for their plan. If it's not, they need to buy a piece of property somewhere else it is. And, I mean, that, that's just stands in general to me. Not, I'm not picking out anybody that's got one, anybody that hadn't got one, I'm not referring to any of that, I'm just talking about as a whole.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
LDR. One else.
Commissioners, my name is James Bellisbach, I live at 8674 Highway 98, Port, Beacon Hill. My view from my lot overlooks Beacon Hill Park, the park and also the beach. And the piece of ground that we're talking about, I think, is the one that you're going to allow somebody to build up six inches within the park. I think that is actually horrific, okay? I'm a veteran, it's a Veterans Park, and it shouldn't be allowed. It's just my opinion.
No, sir, it's a public park. Here's the name, Veterans.
It does.
Public park.
Are you, and?
Public park.
It is.
Named it after our veterans that serve this county and this country.
Well, thank you very much for the clarification. Okay, but still, to allow somebody to build within six inches of that public park, a Veterans Park, is not right. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Yeah, Commissioners, we have four public comment, but I just take you all to page, or actually, section 2.0507, if each of you Commissioners can turn to that section in the LDRs.
I'll come back, but I want to go to this attorney first.
Just, it's section 2.0507, it is specifically with regards to variances. You've had public comment and some inaccurate statements made with regards to our current law and what you're proposing to do now. So I want to make very clear for the Commission and the public what your current law is. And I'm going to read your current law. It says, "A variance from the terms of these regulations shall not be granted by the Planning, Development, and Review Board unless and until the following requirements or procedures are met. A written application for a variance is submitted to the Planning, Building Department demonstrating that a hardship exists based on one of the following conditions." That is your current law. Under 2.0507, it now reads as follows. "A variance from the terms of these regulations shall be heard, reviewed, and recommendations submitted by the Planning, Development, and Review Board to the Board of County Commissioners for final action after the following requirements and procedures are met. A written application for a variance is submitted to the Planning, Building Department demonstrating that a hardship exists based on one of the following conditions." 34A has not changed, it's the exact same language as the laws currently exist. You go down to Sections 1 and 2, and the preposition of the word "or" has been placed to further clarify the sentence above that says it's based on one of the following conditions, not all four. The word "and" has not been removed, and nor was it previously in there. It simply adds the word "or" to Sections 1 and 2, and it was previously on number 3. That was the current law, and what's been added now is to add that additional preposition, but there has not been any words "and" removed, and it currently does not require that they all be met, it simply says that one of the following conditions be met. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, the staff's efforts were to further clarify your current laws. There is not an attempt by the Planning Department, that I'm aware of in speaking with Mr. Lowry, Mr. Richardson, to change the intent of this Commission. As you go through the 20 so pages in the LDRs of Article 2, you'll see it's restated numerous times over. Historically, for the last 20 years, this Board of County Commissioners has asked an advisory board to review development order applications and provide their recommendations to you. You consistently have done that, you continue to do that, and this Board of County Commissioners make the final decision. There was a challenge last year, and it was quashed, the variance that was spoken of, and I don't want to get into particulars or details because we're here about the LDRs. It was sent back for procedural deficiencies, a lack of due process, and a quasi-judicial setting. The legal merits of your LDRs were not addressed, other than you didn't have proper due process. The LDRs in Article 2 now state numerous times that the PDRB is an advisory board only, and you five elected officials make a determination on development orders in Gulf County. That's what you've done for the past 20 years, and that's what's currently in Article 2 to continue on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about variance section.
Go back, guys. Yep.
I just needed to ask a question about what was just stated.
Come on up, give your name, then we can all.
I didn't know if it was permissible for me to holler from the back, but.
No, 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 come on up, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Corbin, 9106, all about the new Beacon Hill. Just on the, what you just read to us about the existing law, I think when, when we were all kind of digesting what was going on with the variance in Beacon Hill, I thought I understood that at some point in fourth quarter of either 2013, maybe, the LDR was changed. And I'm just wondering, you know, for the sake of us, you know, that are obviously anguished by this, could you help us understand what those previous changes to the LDR were? Understand what the, what it is today, what was it prior, and in what timeframe did that change?
Sure. Mr. Attorney, do you want to address?
Yeah, I can, I can try. I'd just say, Ms. Corbin, the county received a grant over two and a half years ago for the Planning Department to take a technical review and evaluation and conduct various public hearings. I don't have it in front of me, and I don't know of all the LDRs what was changed, what wasn't, but I know that they provided a grant, the Planning Department worked on those revisions, and they're, they're available as part of public records. So I couldn't comment specifically about what was and wasn't changed, but they, I think they had three Planning Board public hearings, and then two County Commission public hearings. There's five public hearings on the revisions over two and a half years ago that were required by the grant, they all notified and advertised. And I don't know, David, I mean, there's over, I think about 300 pages, so I don't know specifically, Ms. Corbin, I couldn't comment on one particular change.
Yeah, I, my only concern is, you know, that the comments that I'm hearing, you know, from other folks that have come forward, you know, seem to, to point out some of the potential minefields that exist if we accepted the LDRs, and where, you know, say, you know, hey, it's, it's, you know, you don't need to qualify under multiple conditions, you only need to qualify under one. Is that a good policy, and does, does that serve us all well?
I can, and, Chairman, I'd say, Ms. Corbin, in my five years, short five years, I'm aware of one challenge legally, that judicial review last year. Prior to that, I'm not aware of any under County Attorney McFarland. So in the better part of 19 years, I'm unaware of a challenge to the LDRs for that interpretation. The county acts as a quasi-judicial body, which means they are the judge, the five folks up here. And for the past 19 years, they've made that judgment, taking the facts and the applications, and applying the county law. And this five is given that authority by statute. They apply the law. And so every fact pattern that comes in, they will apply it and make a judgment or an interpretation. So if there's a plea for a hardship under the current LDRs, these five elected officials make that final decision that they're allowed to by law. That has happened for 19 years. What we've done in Article 2 is reinforce that they have the authority, not the Planning Board, because it was challenged saying the Planning Board has that authority, when in fact, the counties made that decision historically for the past two decades. That will continue if this is adopted the way it is.
I understand what you've, what you've told me, and I guess my only comment, you know, to our lawmakers here, is that, you know, we, I'm sorry.
Wait.
That, that we, you know, have identified, you know, the opportunity where what sounds like, you know, good policy, you know, could turn very bad based on how it's applied to an individual parcel condition. So, you know, I, I for one would like to defer any decision on the LDR until we've had a chance, you know, to work through the language again. I think we can get to something that's agreeable for everybody, and something that feels equitable for everybody, but I think the way the LDR is stated today, that there is an opportunity for, struggling for the, for the correct words, but damage to be done to, to the layout of some of our very pristine properties. And I'd like us to be very cautious about those resources and how they're developed, and make sure that what we provide for Gulf County is something that's very pleasing and that our development is thoughtful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just in going with what Ms., going along with what Ms. Corbin has said, under this particular LDR for the variance as it's written, and as, regardless of what the change is, if it's, just clarifying, the issue is the way it's written, if, if someone makes a change to their property, and it's their own actions, but it results in something that's peculiar to that piece of property, under this language, they qualify for a variance. And I don't see how we can deny a variance in that situation, because they qualify. So if I do something to my property, and I make it different than the properties around me, even though I did it myself, I qualify for a variance. And that's my issue. My specific issue is with number three, that the special conditions of circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. That should be, in any case, if it results from your own actions, then you should not qualify for a variance. And to me, that's the issue. Really, anyone would qualify.
Not to belabor the point, but, but I think that the and or the or got really fouled up in this situation. If, if we follow the, the basic text that Commissioner Bryan brought up, that you don't want to, then you're going to eliminate 90 some odd percent of the variances. Let me give you an example. Gulf County didn't adopt a comp plan until 1992, adopted the LDRs in 1994. The vast majority of existing homes and structures and buildings in Gulf County do not meet the current LDRs. I live in a house that was built in 1956. If I decided to sell that house to Mr. Novak tomorrow, I'll never get a title policy to give Mr. Novak until I get a variance. You know why? I've got three sheds, one a pump shed and two sheds that are built right on the line. And my next door neighbor's house is built right on the line. There are hundreds, thousands of examples of folks that do not meet the current LDRs. Some sheds were built 10 years ago, some were built 50 years ago. So if you, if you, if you change the wording, just like the attorney said, we're not changing the wording, we're clarifying the wording, if you change the wording, did you have to meet all four criteria, not one of the four, which is, is what it's always been and what it is today, then you'll give no after-the-fact variances. You won't be able to give variances, just like you voted on two weeks ago, to somebody who inadvertently built their shed too close to the line, there was confusion, it was an honest mistake, those type of things. So it can't be you meet all four, or you'll never have a variance. You're elected to make decisions, and it's always a political decision. You weigh the ballot, and that's, that's the facts of life. If, if it was a straight law, we'd have no Planning Board, we'd have no decisions whatsoever. Everybody would be black and white, and everybody would be in trouble in Gulf County. We have to deal with what we have, and we've only had an LDR for the last 21 years. So there are a lot of properties that will have to have variances in the future, as people die, as people sell, and things of that nature. I just want to clarify that, that it would be impossible to meet all four criteria and ever get a variance on existing property that's built illegally.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This board should not be making political decisions for people asking for variances. It should be an even playing field, and you should know what the rules are, and the board should be applying the rules. We shouldn't make decisions for, on variances based on politics, it should not be a political decision. And there is a timeframe, we have existing places that have been around for a very long time, and you can have a timeframe cutoff, you can deal with this in different ways, but this exists now and going forward. So if I go out and do it tomorrow, you know, I want to put that shed in the setback, I'm just going to do it, and next year, I'll ask for a variance, it's already there. This is not helping our community as we move forward.
Okay, I'll entertain one more LDR, one more from the audience. Close this to the public on the LDR. Please, to the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to go back and address, like we did at the last board meeting, we have an attorney that spent an awful lot of time putting this together. We paid him, that's true. We've spent, basically, for the past 19 years, following these LDRs. All as I know, I've been on the board almost 16 years, we've only had one issue, and this is the one that's come up on St. Joe Beach. I think the attorney has done an excellent job with this. There's, there's avenues that we can take down the road and modify this as we go along, but for right now, I'm satisfied. And I'm going to put a motion on the table that would support our attorney with what he drew up, and let's move forward with this.
Clarify your motion, you're putting a motion on the floor to accept this LDR. All right, motion by Commissioner Macklemore. All right, do I have a second to that motion? You have a second. Got a second here by Commissioner Jaeger. As any discussion, any board discussion.
I have one comment. This has nothing to do with support for our attorney. Our attorney drafts what we ask him to draft from a legal perspective. He assures that it is a legally proper document, but he serves at the will of the board, and the people elect us. I don't think Mr. Novak would look at it any differently, and I don't think he takes his drafting personally when we're discussing making a substantive change. I'm not saying this is drafted in poor legalese, it's about the substance, it's not about the legal drafting. So it has nothing to do with supporting or not supporting the attorney.
I, I just think he's done an awful good job with this, putting this together. It's been very hard, and very hard getting the balance, and I think he's come up with a, with a good plan for this, and I'm going, I'm going to support what he's got out there.
Just along those lines, in terms of pride of authorship, it, as I mentioned over the holidays, it was your Planning Department, with your administrative staff, I worked in conjunction with them, as I do with everything that comes through, and this is a team effort, as it is with everything. Like I said at the last meeting, your LDRs have evolved over the past two decades, so it is not something that just happened since December till now. This document represents really the history of land development regulations in the county for the past 20 years. The second point with regards to your LDRs, if the county, as you indicated, Commissioner Bryan, wished to instruct us to do further revisions, we just need that direction as a staff, and we go back in, it's Article 1, whatever article, and we just need the directive of this board. And if you tell us to do that, we'll go back and work further.
All right, thanks, Eric. For the board discussion. Before we go to the vote, any public discussion? Public? For the board discussion? Oh, for the votes, any opposition to the motion?
I oppose.
Right. Any further opposition? Motion passed, 4 to 1.
We've, we've already had the vote, Tom. It's done.
Did you, did you just vote to, to pass the LDR as it is?
Yeah.
I thought you had to have three hearings, two hearings and a third one.
Follow statute, sir.
Exactly. All right, the next, uh, public comments will be on the, we're going to address the leave no trace. Everyone saying that, if not, we're going to, the attorney will address it right now for you.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the second public hearing this evening is on leave no trace at the direction of the chairman and it was also advertised in the same public notice in the news herald.
But please, the chair, the attorney at the floor, let's show respect.
On January fifth and January nineteenth, in compliance with Florida Statute 125, with permission of the board, I will read it by title.
Okay.
The ordinance reads as follows, as ordinance, an ordinance of Gulf County, Florida prohibiting and regulating obstructions and personal property abandoned on the public beaches of Gulf County, Florida, and to be commonly referred to as Gulf County Leave No Trace Ordinance, requiring the posting of proper notice and signage at beach access points and in daily, weekly and monthly rental units in Gulf County, Florida. For said policies to be amended, be codified and become part of Gulf County Land Development Regulations, providing for the repeal or severability modification that may arise from consideration at these public hearings and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, the better part of the past two years, starting with your tourist development council and public comment, have seen increased discussion and recommendations to you all to prepare and consider an ordinance on regulating abandoned property on your beaches throughout Gulf County. You've instructed the staff to work through this issue. They've had several committee meetings. We've worked in your tourist development council. There's been town hall workshops through the TDC and we had our first public hearing on the ordinance in front of you all on January thirteenth. It was the goal of the staff that I've worked with to get something in front of you all so that you have something on your books prior to March, your spring break, visitors and the start of the tourist season. What you have is an ordinance prepared and since the last meeting, I took the opportunity to take the comments that you all had provided to me as well as the public comment. And then in addition, you had a public hearing before your planning board yesterday. And over that course of more than an hour, the planning board offered additional comments as well. I've incorporated your comments as well as the planning boards into a highlighted version addressing three sections that you touched on at your last hearing. So, I'll provide those to the commissioners. I'll touch on those first so we can review those and then I'd ask for you to open up the public comment and I'll provide them to you now. Just as a general statement, commissioners, in addition to the abandoned property for the benefit of the community that's here tonight for the public hearing, if this is the first time they're attending, some areas of focus beyond abandoned property, an hour after sunset until sunrise each day is the period which is defined as the time you cannot leave abandoned property on the beaches. You heard public testimony at your last hearing of over a hundred thousand pounds of trash collected by county officials in the past year. To address those issues, there's language created that gives the county the ability to collect abandoned property if it's classified as such on our beaches and bring it into the county campus and dispose of it. While we've gone through those public discussions and town hall meetings and committees, other areas of focus in the county were the driving on beaches. And at your last meeting, we introduced the language that amend your current beach driving ordinance through this ordinance, which now prohibits driving permits being issued to non-county residents or non-county property owners. So, that weekly pass or permit that could be purchased in the past would be prohibited by this new ordinance amendment. In addition to that, other areas that have been covered now that there'll, there'll be an ordinance that says no longer there is allowed to have glass on our Gep County beaches. If you dig holes, you have to cover them back up and leave it at the grade that you came that same day. Camping on Gulf County beaches shall be prohibited within four hundred feet of a structure. In addition, open fires in the county will be prohibited within a hundred feet of any structure and that includes boardwalks. In addition to those, there is also a solicitation or soliciting and canvassing for commercial purposes on the beaches. Aside from our sheriff's department, county officials and the TDC, it's prohibited for soliciting or canvassing on our beaches for the visitors and our residents. There's a sound amplification and a quiet enjoyment provision, also a breach of the peace and disorderly conduct and it's an extension of currently what we have on our books. There's a provision with no removal of sand from our beaches. And then the last component, which is what the TDC and the staff are striving for in the coming years, as this is hopefully in some shape or fashion adopted by this commission, would be an educational campaign. So, under section seventeen and eighteen, your TDC, if this is adopted, will be required to go out and each year conduct a campaign to educate the public and the visitors on what our leave no trace ordinance requires. In addition to that, there's a provision where our vacation rental businesses in Gulf County, if this is adopted, will be required to place a summary that's approved by the county administration and the TDC on an annual basis on, inside each vacation rental home, summarizing what our leave no trace and trying to provide our visitors a guideline of what is permitted and what is not going forward. I highlighted in the actual revision I just handed to you all, comments that I received from you as well as your planning board yesterday. And Commissioner Jaeger, starting on page five, that correction with regards to C thirty E has been included from your last meeting. On page seven, it is simply referring to the exceptions for beachfront and waterfront owners. We had comment at the last meeting and at the planning board meeting with regards to what are the property rights of your Gulffront or beachfront owners. And what we've tried to do in this ordinance is create an exception where obviously they can come to the county on an annual basis, secure a permit, receive the proper tag, put it on their own personal property. And the argument where the discussion was, that is their front yard and under property rights, that is, can be argued. Obviously, our sandy shores of Gulf County are enjoyed by all of our visitors and all of our residents, but we also want to be, have a balance and respect the property owner's rights that own along our waterways. So, what we've done is we've simply asked that there be a permitting process for our property owners in Gulf County. There's no fee. We simply ask them to identify the property that they own each year, identify that they own the property and provide that proof and then we provide it the proper tags and then they can leave their property on their beachfront. Beyond that, there's a permitting and you'll see on page eight, we've added some additional language for that to provide that tags by the administrative, or the administrators shall be provided for applications for disabled access, lawful activities, government or educational activities, scientific research or property owners that live, and those shall be no fee for those. The administration shall charge a fee for special events or commercial events that are approved for these beaches. If it is a business venture, then the county will charge a nominal fee for that tag. And you'll see that on page eight. Page nine is the only other changes to the ordinance from your discussions. First and foremost, there was additional comment added with regards to open fires. Bonfires has been replaced with open fires in Gulf County. And you'll see that the language, and I'll read it for the public, it says, "Open fires shall be controlled and supervised and intended for their entire duration. All open fires on Gulf County beaches shall strictly prohibit materials to burn other than natural wood materials. Pallets, wood with screws, nails or metals and all pressure treated woods are all strictly prohibited from burning on Gulf County beaches." The Gulf County Administration and Board reserve the right to prohibit open fires on Gulf County beaches for designated days due to unfavorable weather conditions and public safety concerns. And we also added the word boardwalks to structures or restrictions of prohibited fires within a home or a boardwalk for that matter. If you move down, you'll see section ten, there was discussion with regards to fishing and chumming. I've had discussions with FWC Council since then and going back and forth and we've have a public policy or a public safety concern about protecting our visitors, creating a safe environment, but also obviously not overstepping the county's restrictions or ability to regulate marine fishing or marine life as an FWC jurisdiction. Based on the discussions, I would recommend that we strike section ten in its entirety and that would be the final change to the current ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we open to the public comment.
Any board member have any questions with attorney concerning the leave no trace ordinance? At this time, I'm opening it to the public, the comment on the leave no trace ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association of South Gulf County President. I want to commend Jeremy for the comprehensive writing of this, also for the TDC's input and how much effort they did in researching other areas and trying to come up with a balance plan, something that would protect our citizens throughout Gulf County as well as protecting us on the beaches and coast itself. We've come to you a number of times begging you for some relief. It's, it's gotten beyond the pale and it's volume. It's, it's, whenever I moved here twenty-five years ago, I could do things on that beach I can't do today. I wouldn't go skinny dipping today, even if I.
Okay. Okay. We need a good yuck.
It would be painful for the people watching. But you've got to, you've got to realize that we've, we've got change occurring and, and we're getting different types of visitors. We're not getting people that were as concerned about the environment and the beaches we were before. And you start throwing twenty thousand people out there, it's more than the entire county coming on to, on our beaches. We need some relief. All of these are comprehensive now because we didn't address them when they came up one at a time. It's a good ordinance, it's a great start. I do think that your camping ought to be limited to Gulf County residents as well because one, you were saying they can't, other people can't drive out there, how are they going to get out there? And primitive camping in a front yard in a public beach is not appropriate, no matter where you are. And that's what we have out there. We do not have facilities for them to go to. So, I think it ought to be held for Gulf County residents and permitted, just like the driving is. And I want to hold open that driving for our Gulf County residents and from the safety standpoint and that's, you know, and, and, but historically, but they're the taxpayers too. Outside people are not taxpayers. We do not have to provide them with driving on our beach whenever they don't know how to do it. Basically, the rest of it, I think is just good common sense and protection for we people who live here full time, pay taxes and need some help and relief from, from the visitors that come in. And TDC's done a damn good job bringing them in here.
They have.
Please vote this up for us.
Thank you, Dr. Hardman. Anyone else on the leave no trace ordinance? Anyone else? All right, we'll get you next. Come on, come on, come on, sir. I want to get her.
Terry Lynn, San Joe Beach. Just a couple of questions. What benefit is, as a taxpayer, am I going to receive out of this? And how much is the cost of this law going to be? You're going to have to hire people. Where's that money going to come from? And what are you going to cut to make that happen?
Can I, I'll, I'll address one of those. We actually do a, a beach driving fee that goes to mostly the sheriff and, and so we will have some funds to, I'm not going to say it's going to be perfect. It's just like setting up a speed limit sign at thirty-five miles an hour, it's not going to be perfect. There's going to be people that do forty-five that you're not going to catch. But I think it's a start and the enforcement's going to be key to any ordinance that you put in and we'll do the best we can at, at moving that forward. But, but one of, one of the revenue sources is actual fee for the beach driving.
Okay. And you were saying that the fires, we're going to have beach fires and then we're going to decide what days you can have beach fires? How's the public going to know about that?
Now, I, I think the beach fires are open and I'll defer to the attorney, but the way I understand it, the beach fires are open. However, if for some reason the state says we should have a, a no burn time or something because of dry conditions or that type of thing, that gives the administration the, the ability to say we're not, no, no more fires on the beach for a certain length of time. So, it's a, it's, it's, it's a safety measure that, that gives the administration that, that ability. That's the way I understand it.
But how does that, how does the public find out about that?
Go ahead.
Mr. Lynn, if I can address both questions, I think they're very good. And from the public hearings we sat through the last two years, specifically with regards to the fires and it goes to enforcement and we've had at the other public hearings, the issue of enforcement keeps coming up on this ordinance as well as others. And the public comment, and I think Dr. Hardman touched on it earlier, which is you're eighty or ninety percent, once this is placed on the books, you'll have law abiding citizens that understand what your regulations are. And then the other ten percent, obviously the county's going to have to enforce. So, by the public education efforts by the TDC and the county commission, there's going to be a cooperation with our vacation home rental businesses. It's a community effort to try to educate visitors to this community. With regards to the fires specifically, just to give the county the ability to relay the information and enforce it, if our forestry department or we find out from the state it is not favorable conditions, it is very difficult for communication, especially when we have local states of emergency. The commission will call an emergency meeting, they'll meet within twenty-four hours, they'll declare it and oftentimes it's difficult to get the information out to the community. The fact that it's done and they've done it through the statute, they then have the authorization, the ability to take certain actions. If the community doesn't know and there is a fire on the beaches, the county then has the ability for officials to go out and tell them to put it out. And this is simply just an ability for them to do it. It is an additional provision that if it need be during a storm event or a dry season, the county can enforce it. Right now, there's no provisions that restrict the county from stopping from someone from burning.
And how much does that permit for the, for an individual if they want to, you said there was going to be a fee for permit for the individual?
Yes, sir. There's seven provisions where permits will be issued to people in Gulf County. There's five of them that there's no fee, disabled applications, church events, educational events, government events, scientific research. There's two of those provisions which are commercial events or, I forget the other one.
Waiting or something.
There's commercial events, I'm sorry, and then commercial operations, which is we have people that rent umbrellas and tents and chairs in this community that have businesses. They'll also go through the process with the county. The administration on an annual basis and it's defined in the ordinance, gives the county administration the ability to set a nominal fee to cover the cost of the tags and then these commercial operations will get those tags, it'll identify the umbrellas as theirs so they're not defined as abandoned and we'll know whose they are. And then for weddings and other commercial events, they'll have to come and identify who they are, say that they have permission to be on that beachfront of that property owner and then get a tag for the day or two days if they're going to have the wedding and pay that nominal fee so that the county officials also know that it's a proper place to have it.
By nominal fee, what do you decide is a nominal fee?
Yeah, it defines it and it's an annual basis, but it's up to the administrator to, the administration as to what that may be on an annual basis.
Okay.
But the word nominal is intentional so that it wouldn't be more than what it costs the operation, the application, the tag.
When my grandson comes down to visit me and he falls asleep after dark, gazing at the stars on a blanket, what's going to happen to him?
As long as he's not within four hundred feet of, I'm sorry, four hundred feet of a structure, he's technically not camping, so there's nothing. He enjoys himself.
Four hundred feet, you're saying four hundred feet away from a structure?
That's the camping provision, that's correct.
But it, it says right here in your thing that if you're, if you've got a blanket or a beach roll, you're actually technically in violation of the law.
If you're not with it at night, then it's abandoned, that's correct.
It's abandoned, but if you're laying on it looking up at the stars and you fall asleep.
It's not abandoned.
You're with it.
Not abandoned.
You're on it, right, I'm on it, but it says no camping with the intent to sleep. I mean, if you're sleeping on the beach within a hundred feet.
Yeah, it, it, I'd say they're valid points, I just know there's going to be a process the county goes through in the next couple of years to grow into the ordinance. And so, these issues will obviously be addressed by county officials as they move forward.
And definition of holes. What's a hole? You going to rest all the sand crabs out there? Yeah, I don't know. I mean, there's no definition for a hole.
Mr. Lynn, the, the issue with the holes is that we have folks that dig very large holes and we have had people that are injured by walking in those holes. And there is a, an element of, of common sense that goes into the drafting of any ordinance or law. And if you have a cup and you set it in the sand and it makes a hole. And if you have a cup and you set it in the sand and it makes a hole and you pick up the cup and you leave, nobody's going to come and get you because there's a hole like this. There's dents in the sand. But we clearly have an issue with people digging very large holes that are dangerous and those need to be filled in.
I can agree with that wholeheartedly, but there is no definition of a hole.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I am.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner here wants to.
I was just going to say that there's three intents behind the ordinance. And I just offer for the public and the commissioners, it's to protect the property rights, it's to make the tourists and the residents of Gulf County all have an enjoyable environment, and the third is to protect the natural habitat for the beaches and our wildlife. So as long as there's no abuse, then the intent of the ordinance is to protect those three interests. So, you know, disruption or use of these beaches is not intended to restrict people's use, it's intended to protect those three interests. And that was the main goal all along. So minor infractions in terms of, that won't be addressed by the ordinance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to back up and really look at this and be very careful with this before we make a decision. Now, I'm in support of it, you know, but I want to be very cautious. I'm wondering, and I'm just asking the board, maybe, just maybe, because it seems like most of the problem is on the Cape, 15,000, 20,000 tours, maybe we should start there and leave San Joe Beach out of it at this point in time and Indian Pass. I'm just throwing that out there, I don't, I don't know if that's the answer. I support it. You know, I support it 100 percent, either way the board wants to go. I mean, I do support it.
Brief comment. I like what our attorney drafted and like to support our attorney.
Make a motion, Ms. Brown.
Anytime the government gets involved in drafting ordinance and rules on our citizens, it's a challenge. We all like limited government and the best that we can do, but we all have to protect everybody's rights. And that's what we're trying to do with this ordinance. I actually put this ordinance off, and Pat will tell you, we discussed this ordinance for two or three years before we actually drafted this ordinance. But the last summer opened my eyes, because I've been on those beaches all my life and I travel those beaches probably a couple of times a week during the summer and in the winter some. And I can tell you, it was a problem this summer. And this is a good ordinance, it's a good ordinance and other counties, our surrounding counties have it. It's not a perfect ordinance. And as with any ordinance, we can address issues that we have with it going forward. But I support this ordinance and if there's no more public comment or board comment, oh, we got public comment. Yeah, I got to go back out here.
Dolores Lowery, 318 Helmet Street, Beacon Hill. I'm in support of the ordinance, but I just have one question. On the dedicated beaches, there's a path that goes to the beach and a lot of people put carpet on those paths. And I know they put it there to keep the, keep the path open, but there's a path right in front of where I live and there's a path two blocks down. And the one that's not carpeted is just as nice as the one that is carpeted. And I wonder if this addresses putting carpet on the beach because I think that that's a detriment to the, it's a beautiful path with just the white sand. And the other one's got just old carpet, you know, and it really doesn't do anything. And I would like to see that addressed too. And I pick up tons and tons of trash every time I go to the beach, so I do support the ordinance. Does it have any provision in there for?
I don't know if the, some of those walkovers may or may not be public walkovers.
This one is a public walkover, there's this Gulf County sign right up at the trail.
And Mr. Attorney, you probably could speak to this, but it may not be permissible now to be placing the ordinance of carpet. It may not be something that needs to be addressed if it's already.
Yeah, in terms of the dunes and the vegetation, it's a completely, I don't want to say different animal, but it's a completely different environment than our sandy shores. Our ordinance takes it from the mean high water line to the toe of the dune and that we're dealing specifically with that area. This doesn't touch anything with regards to the dunes or prior to that in terms of right of ways or private property. St. Joe Beach, last year we dealt with yond tradition and signage and personal deeded restrictions. This ordinance does not speak to anything with regards to those dune access points. The state has regulation and jurisdiction over them. There are state statutes that specifically speak to that. But this ordinance only talks from the toe of the dune vegetation line to the mean high water line. That's a different, it's outside the scope of this ordinance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowery. Mr. Chairman, may I make one?
Yes, come on, why she's coming in.
I just, I want to make the comment that, Fisher McLemore, I was playing with you there, obviously, and you threw it out there, I had to hit it.
But I agree with you. I agree with you. Make the motion, let's move forward.
But I do, I do think that as we move, if we accept this today as we move forward, we may have to go back and revise it in its application if we have things that don't work.
Zeeby Schmidt, St. Joe Beach. First of all, please don't leave St. Joe Beach out of this.
I just threw that out there.
I just really want to make it very clear. We have some major issues there. And I appreciate how you drafted this, it's absolutely beautifully done. But we do have people who just come and camp right there and it's not, what, 200 feet from my window? And they will stay for three days. And it is not a pleasant feeling. So I would urge you to look at all the beaches the same in Gulf County, because we are pretty much the same in Gulf County. We need it to happen. The 100,000 pounds that you've picked up does not count the trash that we pick up when we go to the beach and we see trash. It is a huge, huge problem and we need this legislation, this piece of regulation is beautifully done. And I would say, please, let's pass it before we have to deal with this problem again. Great, thanks.
Thank you, dear. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, let me get dressed.
Lisa Delaney, 139 Sand Pine Drive, Port St. Joe.
Yes, the time has come for this legislation. Apparently, we're like the last county in the area that doesn't have one, so we're getting everybody on our beaches that don't care to pick up after themselves. And I've been coming here for 15 years and last summer was tent city, it was awful. You knew when Saturday came because that's when the tents were empty, because everybody left their stuff on the beach. The only question I have is when you talked about the beach fires and you said supervision, it might be appropriate to have an age on that. So maybe 12 years old, 16 years old, something like that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think, I think everyone knows the feeling it's going to be, come on. Sure.
Couldn't resist. My name's Gretchen Hayes, 8649 Highway 98, San Joe Beach. You said something about peace and serenity somewhere in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Has fireworks ever been addressed with this ordinance? I mean, you talk about fires on the beach and safety. I had an expanded firework land on my deck. And during the summer, they blow them off, mostly tourists, from the minute the sun goes down until it comes up. There's no peace and serenity in front of my house. So I don't know if fireworks were addressed, I think there's a state law.
There is.
Anything that flies or goes boom, it's not supposed to.
Like when we have the Fourth of July.
Yeah, well, and I, you know, I don't begrudge anybody having a good time on the Fourth of July, but really, I'm just saying, maybe that's something should be looked at as well. Thanks.
All right, anyone else? I think we all got the feeling in here. Or not. All right, the leave no trace is now public comment is closed. All right, wishes of the board on the leave no trace ordinance.
I'm good with it, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, here we go, here we go.
All right, and.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Yeager, if you can include in the motion as amended today that you have in front of you for the purpose of the public.
With the changes that was presented.
You have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, second by Commissioner Brown. Any further board discussion on no trace ordinance? Any further discussion for me, ordinance on no face order? If there's no opposition, motion passes, five and over. Next. Ordinance for the board today, this will be the final public comment, is the RV ordinance.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. The third and final public hearing this evening, again, in compliant with Florida Statute 125, Section 66, is this ordinance is required to have two public hearings, one during the day, one after 5 o'clock in the evening, barring a special vote of this commission. This is the second hearing compliant with the statute that was advertised on the 5th of January and the 19th in the News Herald, as recommended by Florida statute. And I'll read it by title unless there's an objection from the commission. An ordinance of Gulf County for Florida for creating policies regulating recreational vehicles, otherwise known as RVs, and their location, placement, RVs per parcel, use and storage of RVs within both unincorporated Gulf County and within the coastal corridor, to be commonly referred to as the Gulf County RV ordinance. For said policies to amend, be codified, and become part of the Gulf County Land Development Regulations, and providing for the repealer, severability, modifications that may arise in consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, you each have a copy of the advertised and distributed RV ordinance. Again, our first public hearing, I had offered some initial comments. This ordinance, similar to your leave no trace, is the result. The leave no trace for several years, the RV has been back and forth before the commission and your staff for the past few years as well. What you have in front of you is the most recent version of the recommended recreational vehicle language. What it does in essence is it creates a coastal corridor, a coastal construction corridor. In the last meeting we were here, we provided you with a color map and the one that's been published and provided to the public has those lines delineated by our GPS department, or GIS department. The three lines that were offered for your consideration, which was one, the intercoastal, the second was 1,500 feet from the mean high water line, and the third was one mile from the mean high water line. They were offered to you all as different various options of defining what your coastal construction corridor. You heard Mr. Knight come in and provide you some background on the Florida Building Code and our requirements along the coast for building requirements of single-family stick-built dwellings. The first question, and you'll see there's options in your ordinance as to ask you all to define what that corridor would be, one of those three. Beyond that, there is two different zones. If you're landward of that line that you define, then the current land development regulations for RVs applies to everyone in the county. That's already part of your law and it exists and it'll continue to be utilized by the county staff. If you're seaward of the line that you define, then there is considered a corridor of higher concern or public safety. Those are the areas more vulnerable to wind and flooding events. We provided the whereas clauses in this ordinance to provide the public policy of why you would adopt this ordinance. And what the restrictions do is it applies certain regulations to folks that want to bring a recreational vehicle and have it within this coastal construction corridor. I know in the last two weeks since our public hearing, I believe you commissioners have probably received in excess of 50, maybe 60 emails, and it run the spectrum, for, against, everywhere in between. I've done my part and tried to read as many of those as I can. I believe you all have two in your comments to me individually. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I've also made some notes from your last meeting. Also, your planning board has had, I believe, we counted, seven public hearings on recreational vehicles going back for the past few years. This commission's had several public hearings prior to January 13th on this issue. So I'll be happy to answer any questions and before you open to the public comment.
All right, board have any questions?
Yes, I do. Maybe, Mr. Chairman, I can lighten the load a little bit now and I'm going to throw this out there and we'll see how the board reacts and how the public reacts to it. Seems like to me that the big issue is St. Joe Beach, the Cape, Indian Pass, Island View, Oak Grove, Simmons Bow. They don't seem to be a big issue there. They're protected a lot from the storms by the peninsula. So maybe I would support leaving those three sections out of the ordinance. So maybe that'll lighten the load a little bit. And I don't know how the board feels about that, you know, if the board feels good about it, the public feels good about it, we'd move forward with that, I'd put it on the table.
You repeat the three?
Yes, okay.
Island View.
Yeah, take, Island View, Oak Grove, Simmons Bow, because they're protected somewhat, you know, somewhat from the peninsula. St. Joe Beach is wide open, Indian Pass is wide open, the Cape's wide open. You know, and here again, this is an issue that we can, we can look at. If we need to see where we need to come back at a later date and look at these areas and perhaps the whole county, we can do that. But for right now, you know, that would give us some starters.
Yes, sir.
You know, I mean, that was discussed at the last public hearing and I've got some thoughts that that may, that may can work. But those folks in that area will still have to abide by the LDRs, it says one per lot.
Absolutely. And the ones that, in the way I understand it, the, with the ordinance, the ones that already have RVs there, they're grandfathered in, pretty much, this is for new residents that can't bring them in and leave them for a long period of time or whatever and have to be removed by storm.
I'm anxious to hear what everybody has to say.
The, you have any on this or, Mr.? Why go to the?
On just this particular issue of the three or the whole RV ordinance? I don't see how we can make a decision on the three until we know what the ordinance is, whether it applies to those three. I understand what you're saying, but I think we should not vote on those three areas until we have more discussion regarding what this particular ordinance says.
Yeah, if I.
Hold it, man.
Yes, sir.
I got the floor. Identify, for everyone in TV here, identify the ones that you want to exempt. Everyone now, let's go.
And I agree with Commissioner Brown, let's hear discussion on it before we actually take a vote. But what I'm looking at is Island View.
Island View, all right.
Oak Grove and Simmons Bow. And like I said, I want to hear discussion from the public, you know.
Simmons, okay.
This is something that I just put out there that we can think about and.
That's if you don't have homes here, you're talking about running that or is that what I want to go?
Yeah, all the way down to Simmons Bow, you know, exclude all of that.
Okay.
Because that's not what the major issue is.
All right, I'll just let him get through now, I'll come back to that, boy.
If we leave, if we, if we do, Cape San Blas, Indian Pass, St. Joe Beach, that's where our tax base is in the county anyway. So I don't, I don't think we'd be hurting the county much, you know, by not including those three.
All right, now let's go over here.
And Mr. Chairman, I think that we can work through some of the issues with the ordinance as it's drafted prior to going to public comment because we may be able to resolve some of the issues that various folks have that are here in attendance. And I think that our attorney has some input that he would like to add from discussions.
Mr. Attorney, you have any?
I guess I would ask the commission, in an effort to try to narrow the scope, there's folks out here that are affected by all three interpretations first and foremost of the corridor. So if I could ask the commission, if you want to provide us some direction as to which line delineates your corridor, we can entertain more public comment, but if. line delineates your corridor, we can entertain more public comment, but if you say that the intercoastal is not applicable, or it's too far landward, you may knock out some of the concerns of property owners and RV owners in the county. So if some of these don't apply, I know we've had discussions with some of you commissioners one-on-one in the last few weeks, where you said 1,500 feet falls in the middle of a road. And you'll have property owners looking across the street of who has the restriction, and on the other side of the street, who doesn't. The intercoastal, obviously, is way landward of one mile. So if there's direction or comment from the commission that we can provide to staff, or even if you wanted to take a, eliminate some of these lines, it may eliminate some of the discussion, and then we can narrow the scope to certain sections from there.
I would like to make the motion that we eliminate the intercoastal as the line.
That's a good motion. Second by Commissioner Yeager, any further board discussion on, anyone from the audience on this? Opposition? Eliminate the intercoastal canal. Opposition motion, pass five and oh. So that took care of that one.
The second discussion, thank you, commissioners, is the issue with regards to wind and flood events and Florida building code. To narrow the scope further, is the 1,500 feet is defined for certain categories of what we build here in Gulf County, in Florida. And then the one mile, as I indicated, the 1,500 feet from the mean high water line falls on some roads throughout our coastal communities. Whereas one mile, the majority of that delineation falls in Panther Valley, St. Joe property, and it's, it's a more clear or defined line of demarcation, where you don't have neighborhoods separated by a certain line. It's also much more difficult to interpret and enforce, obviously, as we move forward and you subdivide your properties throughout the undeveloped portions of the coastal Gulf County. So based on that and the comments that you've all received, it would be a, from the public policy perspective, it would be much more enforceable and easily, easier to interpret if there was a clear line that was less impact to our community.
That makes perfect sense to me. You don't want to split neighborhoods, so I, I would suggest that we do away with 1,500 feet, go with the one mile. I'll make that for them.
I've got a motion here for the one mile. P D, buffers on.
Second motion.
Thank you, sir. Second by Commissioner Queen, any further board discussion on this one mile? One mile now.
Yes, sir. Now, I, I thank you for that, for that clarification. Nothing's been voted on in terms of the ordinance, so I don't want the public to think that you've passed anything, other than what you're doing is you're narrowing the scope of where you think this is going to impact. Nothing's been voted on, on the ordinance. What you've done is you've elected to take one of those three options, and if you do pass the ordinance now, it will be landward and seaward of one mile, unless Commissioner McLemore's discussion goes further to eliminate, eliminate certain sections.
Okay, well understood, and it just don't affect the ordinance, but it, no, with the way that, about the line. It's hitting the boundary line, so I'm gonna put a motion on the table right now.
You gotta finish this.
Oh, you haven't, you haven't called for the boot? Okay, go ahead.
Further discussion on this one mile?
I'm sorry.
Anyone in the audience, any problem? Everything from a mile inland, you, it's by the one per parcel, so. Now we've narrowed it down, we're gonna work from a mile to the coast. We'll be at now. All right, any, any one from the audience on that? Opposition? The motion passed five and oh, if we narrow it, place the corridor at, buffer, one mile. In them.
Okay.
Now you can go.
Let's try to narrow it on down. I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we cut out Island View, Oak Grove, and Simmons Bow area from the ordinance.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. There's some seconds out there. Let me, let me second for a discussion, but I, I'd really think from this point, we've drawn the line, let's hear from the public before we carry a motion like this, if y'all don't mind.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Now we're in the discussion, let's hear it. We can vote either direction.
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe, and Mr. Novak, I believe that we've had prior discussions regarding, with PDRB, and I, I think that some of the issues in this ordinance that we still can scale down. I think, I think if we just, before we open to the public, and I, I want to hear from the public, but if we can scale this ordinance, you know, define things a little bit better prior to hearing from the audience, I, I think that we may limit, that's right. And, and I understand that we may limit some areas. I think that in Mr. Yeager's area, it might be a little bit more difficult to define. Island View is very well-defined, so that's easy to understand. But I, I think that one of the biggest issues when we, if and when we pass this ordinance, that we have a, a term, continual use and occupancy, and I, I think that that is very confusing. I, I think what we need to do is define how someone loses their grandfather clause. And Mr. Attorney, I think you had some suggestions on how we may be able to revise that and make it more clear?
Yeah. Commissioners, I guess one of the issues is, over the last five years, we've gone from 14 days to seven days, to 72 hours, to 48 hours. So it's run the whole spectrum of when it is unoccupied and not in use, a recreational vehicle. And I'd say it was the other end of the spectrum a few years ago, and today we're here discussing that if it's left unattended and occupied during hurricane season, as defined by NOAA, that it's in violation of the ordinance as it's written. The comments that you've all heard is folks come down, leave it, and then go back home during hurricane season. And that's the better part of five, I believe, five, six months, a year. So they have to take it with them if they're gonna leave it for more than two days. So, you know, hearing all the comments and knowing your past discussions and public hearings, is there a directive of the board as to what you define? I understand Commissioner Bryan saying that the use and occupancy and being unoccupied, there's the issue of enforcement, and we have one code enforcement official, and it, how do we determine when it's been unoccupied and not attended to? Then during hurricane season, that's six months, they'll be out regulating that within a mile of the coast. So I guess it would be a question back to the commission as to what is the commission's directive or direction as to what is defined? The, the, the purpose of the ordinance as it's written in the whereas clauses from your, all your meetings, has been public safety. And it's a recreational vehicle, not a single-family dwelling. If it's left unattended during a storm event, then that's where the public safety comes. And I believe the comments you received at your last meeting two weeks ago is if they leave it for a month and there's no storm events, then it was never a public safety issue. Okay. But they still have an obligation to the community and to their neighboring property owners that if there is inclement weather, or there is a local state of emergency, that they have an obligation to remove it. And so four years ago, we had an evacuation provision. It was two pages long, and it said what they had to do. And you received public comment, it said you don't want people coming here during a storm event, to move it out. So the commission has to find, and will provide the staff some direction. You've done it where you have to come and get it out, and today it's, you can't leave it here when you leave. And if there's a middle ground there, we certainly received your directive on that, but we've tried, we've introduced it to you both ways. And if there's a middle between that, I'd ask you all for that directive.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What, what I would suggest, first of all, I would like to say that I, I believe that we have to stop new RVs from coming into these areas. And so I think we need this ordinance. However, we have people who are here, and we need to be very fair to the folks that are here with their RVs. So to me, what, in, in my belief, what the issue is, is what is fair for the folks that have their RVs on their lots, and when do they lose that right to have that RV? I, I believe that we should keep the provision, that if the title is conveyed, the title is changed, I like the way the attorney has worded it, that they lose their grandfather clause. Or if the owner passes away, which would, of course, also result in a transfer of title. But I, I don't want to see us punish our RV owners that if they leave for a certain amount of time, they can't come back, or if, I, I don't believe this is in here, but they are allowed to replace the RV and put a new RV, and they certainly need to be able to take it and get it worked on. So I would like to see that continuous use and occupancy be defined as a fairly long period of time, where it would actually be that they abandoned using that lot for an RV. They don't get to come back six months later and decide they want to put an RV there. I, I think that that's what we need to strive tonight, is to, to come up with that fair provision that ends it. But I do believe that we need to move forward with the, with the ordinance.
Yes.
Commissioners, what I tried to do is summarize some of the statements and the comments you've all received, and in my discussions with you each individually, since your first public hearing, there was really, the directive and the comments I received from you, I tried to summarize them. First and foremost, you'll see number one at the top of this summary sheet of my questions, and you just clarified that for me, which is I asked you to all provide the community and the staff some, some, some more clarity as to what is the impact area of this corridor. And you all elected number two, which is a mile from the mean high water line. Section two on that page in front of you, and I believe that this eight or nine-page ordinance, there is one section, which is section 6B, which defines what is the coastal construction corridor, and what is the restrictions in that corridor. We have gone, as I indicated, across the whole spectrum of what is use and occupancy, how long evacuation routes. And what I try to do is maybe kind of clarify or summarize what you all and the community have provided to try to find some of that middle ground. And I'm gonna read it if I can. RV regulations specifically within the defined coastal construction corridor, this is new language that I'm offering to you commissioners for your consideration. Its RVs permitted within the defined coastal construction corridors shall be bound to all the regulations stated above and comply with the following additional restrictions. And it'll go as follows. One, recorded property owners of parcels or lots within the coastal construction corridor prior to January 27th, 2015, shall be grandfathered to continue their use of property for personal recreation vehicles with the following conditions met. There's three conditions. The first is that on an annual basis, each person that owns that property and that RV, go to the county, fill a one-page application, and receive the annual permit from Gulf County to place on it, identifying who they are, that they own it, and that they have permission to put that RV within the zone. B is that they continue to meet all the requirements under section 6A, and 6A is basically a restatement of our LDRs. And I have section, article three of your LDRs, which we've talked about extensively, which is you have your setback requirements, your parking spaces. Everything that's on the books today for, for our RVs would apply to these RVs within the corridor. The third is that during a mandatory evacuation, all RVs within 48 hours of Gulf County's declaration for wind, storm, or flood events within the corridor would be removed. It goes further to say that there's only three ways in which a grandfather provision in Gulf County would be lost or removed from those parcels that were owned and recorded in the clerk's office prior to January 27th. First and foremost, if you sell or transfer the property from its current titled ownership, you lose your grandfather. Second, the owner passes, that would extinguish the grandfather. The third is, as I stated before, that an owner's failure to comply with the mandatory removal of the RV from the corridor within the 48 hours of declaration of a local state of emergency by Gulf County due to a wind, storm, or flood threat, the owner shall complete the calendar year under which they received the annual RV permit and thereafter prohibited under current ordinance regulations. Meaning, in essence, they will, they were grandfathered in for that calendar year. They, if they are, if they're cited for violating the mandatory evacuation for that recreational vehicle, and not a six-month evacuation, but the state of emergency, and when that emergency passes, they can return. They will continue to receive that grandfather provision in perpetuity until one of the other two events happen, which is a sale or a death. Further, recreational permits for the corridor used for anyone that purchased a parcel of property in Gulf County within a mile of the mean high water line following today. Gulf County shall issue up to two recreational 14-day permits to a parcel or lot owner within the coastal construction corridor on an annual basis following the proper application, and receipt of permit to be prominently displayed on the RV during its occupancy within the corridor. This provision shall not apply to those RVs lawfully visiting Gulf County's RV commercial parks within the coastal construction corridor. Those will always be available, they're, they're regulated by the state, they have private commercial enterprise that regulate the RVs that come and go, and they'll always be regulated by the state and that business owner. This would apply to anybody that purchased a piece of property in the county, wants to bring an RV down in the future. They can come to the county and still use it for recreational purposes, as long as they identify it, get the tag, and they can come and put it anywhere within the corridor. So this is a reflection of the comments that you all offered, the planning board comments, as well as the public comment, to hopefully, like I said, we've tried the other approach, we've tried what you have in front of you currently, and this is a third variation, if you will, for your consideration.
I have some.
All right.
Okay. On, on these revisions, Mr. Novak, regarding the mandatory evacuation of all the RVs within 48 hours of the declaration of state of emergency, does that apply, as it's written, does it apply also to unoccupied RVs? If I have an RV that I store at my home, do I have to get that out of here as well? Or is it only the occupied RV?
As, as, and again, that's for you all to provide further clarification, but as I read it right now, an RV, whether it's occupied or unoccupied, the intent is during those events, that they're removed from the corridor for flooding and wind purposes for public safety. So if it's sitting next to a home, it also needs to be removed from next to the home outside that mile zone.
And, and obviously, there's probably some way of securing an RV if I have a large, something I can drive it into, and it's secure, I don't have to evacuate it. Could there be a provision for people who have something on their lot that can secure their RV, that they would not have to remove it within the 48 hours? I'm concerned that, I understand the safety issues here, I'm, I'm concerned that if we have this provision, we do have a lot of RVs here, and they have to get it out within 48 hours. And as we know, sometimes the hurricanes, they keep turning, and we don't know for sure if they're going to be here, and then all of a sudden, we have a state of emergency, and we have a lot of folks trying to get into the county to get these out. And we may not be able to let them in, and then we have prevented them from removing it. So I, I'm a little concerned with the practical application of this provision, although I do understand the safety issues. My other question is, can we add something to the second portion where the grandfather provision ends upon the sale or transfer of ownership from the current title owner? That would prevent the title from being held in a corporation or an LLC or a trust. That would never transfer, although the people within that corporation, LLC and trust may change. That would be a way to get around that provision. So I, I'd like to see if we could put some language in that would prevent someone from using one of those entities to avoid losing their grandfather provision.
One else on the board before I go to the public?
Well, I, I think Commissioner Bryan brought up a question, and somehow we'd like to address that. Do you have any language that you, that maybe?
Regarding the 48 hours?
Yes.
If we didn't have this requirement, are we in, in violation of anything else that affects our county, our, our ratings, anything having to do with safety? Is this, is required under anything, any other body of law, or does it provide us any kind of savings to, to have this requirement?
I don't, I don't have anything, Commissioner, that I can cite to specifically.
But this is seen here strictly from a safety perspective. And Mr. Richardson, sometimes.
I believe this may apply to a BE zone, if you're in it. And beyond that, maybe a regulated floodway, beyond that, I'm not sure, pass that, Commissioner.
Okay. And I'm not saying we can't have it, I just think that there's some concerns if we don't let the folks in, if we've, I've been in places where we're evacuating, and all the lanes go out, and people can't get in. So I just think we need to be careful with that. But I, I like how we have narrowed this down, and it's, I think this is a more fair treatment of our current RV owners.
We got a motion on the floor. Haven't we? And a second.
You guys remind me what the motion was.
Yeah. I can do that very easily, Paul.
I remember that. Yeah, you, you second for discussion. We can narrow it right on down after y'all.
Well, I mean, we need to go out here and listen, who could out here? Hope so. What do you want to do? You want to hold the motion back?
Yeah, let me back my second off until we hear more of the public discussion. And let's go from there. All right. This time it's open to the public on the RV ordinance, and this will be the second and final. And the first gentleman that we're going to address will be Mr. Doug Smith. Doug, are you here?
Yes, yes, indeed.
Yeah, come on up. There you go. He submitted, he submitted a question.
Yes, I did. I think, this may just be a foolish waste of my time of yours, folks. I'm Doug Smith, 9317 Alden Avenue, Beacon Hill.
Beacon Hill, okay.
Yeah. I don't know why it's gone to such lengths, you know? It's like, we don't trust RVers at all. They're insane, low-life nobodies. They don't know their own business, okay? The fact is, is that I'm a full-time RVer, so I'm the exception to the rule in most cases. I'm going to be gone for six months, I'm going to be gone for nine months, I'm going to be gone a year. You know, it depends on where I want to be, when I want to be. And you come in here, and, you know, I do believe Cape San Blas is a potential problem, okay? I do believe that. You're talking about the evacuation? If you have all these people coming out at one time, so I don't believe Cape San Blas should allow any more RVs. You already have a state park there, if you have those, the evacuation and emergency vehicles need to get in, potential problems with the RVs breaking down, you could end up, you know. So I do believe that makes it unique, okay? I do believe we should go with the NOAA, National Weather Service, when they declare a hurricane warning, we need to evacuate. You know, because I'm going to be gone before that. The storms may, you know, come and go or whatever, but when they declare that warning, we need to evacuate. I do believe that those people that don't move them should be fined, you know? I do believe there needs to be a fine, a penalty, if they don't move them, okay? And that the other people, if you know this is the circumstances of the hurricane warning, they can make plans with hauling companies to haul them off, you know? And I don't know why y'all seem to hate RVs so much, because I do believe that Beacon Hill, St. Joe's Beach, and Highland View will produce more taxes and add jobs for contractors and subcontractors if you continue to allow the RVs to be placed on these residential lots. In addition, you know, the local economy, restaurants, hardware stores, mechanics, hospitals, doctors, dentists, pharmacies, et cetera, you know, will make a contribution to these facilities if you allow RVers to come. You know, because what you have today is you have 10,000 baby boomers turning 62 every day. There are going to be more and more people that choose this lifestyle, to travel like I do, and don't want to be here all the time, you know? I mean, I headed out the last time we had cold weather, further south. I don't like cold weather. And I just don't know why you think the RVers are so bad. You know, you can eliminate them from San Blas because they are a potential problem, but these other beaches, we're going to be out of here. And if they don't, there's a fine to them. You know, that, you know, it's the fact that there is.
Oh, God, you're tired.
Yeah, that's my time, I know, I know. But, you know, I really feel like it's probably a waste of time on my part, but I just don't know why the RVers could do so bad. I just don't. I'm sorry.
And I like what you've said about the grandfather clause, if you accept that, I'm happy. So, okay.
All right, that takes care of me. Now we just go out to the general public, get their hands up, and we'll go, where we want to start. We start back, young lady? Yes. Come on.
Sharon Winchester, White Keapers Drive, Beacon Hill, St. Joe Beach. I'd like to address the exempting of any place between here and St. Joe Beach. We have both an RV and a home. We park our RV on our lot. We're not allowed to live in it or have anybody occupy it, but we certainly will get in it and get out of here when we need to. I've worked in the mobile home construction industry for quite a while. I've lived everywhere from Key West to the Panhandle now, and I have seen a lot of devastation with mobile homes particularly, tied down or not tied down. Highland View is a place waiting to be hit. And yes, there's a peninsula, but when you suffer some bad hurricane that spawns tornadoes, then you need to get places, you need to get these homes out of there, these temporary trailers, fifth wheels, or campers, they're there, out of here, and if they don't live there, something's going to happen. I would hate to be a homeowner and have one of those come through my roof. And it would be a shame if the board has an opportunity to include them in this provision, and they don't, and something happens to somebody in a site-built home. So I'm speaking from a safety point. No, no, sir, I'm just saying Highland View between here and St. Joe Beach, they're right there at the water, and yes, there's a barrier island, but you haven't had a bad hurricane in a long time. And they're just sitting ducks, I think.
Oh, category three or four or five, we'll all be in trouble.
Right, thank you.
Twenty miles inland, thank you, thank you. Okay, well, come over here. Yes, sir, young man, come on.
I've got a question. So mostly, this is a kind of a safety issue with RVs? Is that what?
I think it's part of it.
Okay, biggest part of it? We bought that lot, I think, seven years ago, and, you know, we paid a pretty good price for it. We, you know, I built the structure on it according to the building department, you know, I actually drew up the design or the plan for it, just a simple pole barn. But one of the issues is, you know, if you, on my shoulder, if we have a hurricane come through, I'm not going to consume the RV. You know, the first thing going to go is all these, basically pole barns, like I got on my RV, and a lot of others got on there, they're not really built, so whether you get hit from a paint paint from RV, or a piece of sheet metal off the roof. I mean, either way, they're more of a safety issue than the RVs themselves. I mean, like on my shoulder, I built in tens of millions of buildings, you know, in the last couple of years. The wind load on that building in DeKalb County, I don't know what it is here, is about 8,000 pounds per post. So basically, that's what kind of ugly if you'll have at about 100 miles per hour of wind. So basically, if we had some hurricane come through, my shelter and all these other structures would be gone way before RVs would. Now, of course, I got a pretty good size, I've got a 36-foot RV, it's pretty heavy. It's not going to really go anywhere unless it's a pretty much, pretty strong hurricane about 10 here. But, I mean, from a safety standpoint, some of these buildings that we got are a lot more of a problem than the RV themselves. You know, I just don't see why, you know, the RVers, I hope within the next two or three years to build a house. I don't like, you know, staying in RV, you know, when it come down here, but I don't want to be penalized or told I can't use RV with the fact that I bought that piece of property and I built the structure on it, I did everything right, and it cost me quite a bit of money, so I don't want to be told I can't use my RV or... And I don't really have a problem with being grandfathered in, but I would like to, you know, one day, you know, give it to, you know, maybe give a talk to my son, but I still hope within a couple of years to have, when the two or three years, a house built on. I don't like RVs, and I know we do have a problem, we do need to address that in some way, but hopefully, you know, don't just take the ride of these hard-working people and not be able to use RV. But the...
Thank you. Okay. Anybody over here? If we hit this side, we'll reach over here and get a couple, okay? Either one of you two, gentlemen.
I'm Paul Digby in Highland View, and I really like Mr. Mclemore's proposal just to exempt us and let us continue like we do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul.
I'm John Arnold, Beacon Hill. Board. There's a lot of things I want to say, and I know I ain't going to get it done in three minutes, but I can touch base on a couple of things the last few people said, you know? I went over to Panama one day, and they came out with these Class A, and Class B, and Class C trailers and stuff, and I asked the dealer over there, big old country boy over there, I said, "Sir," I said, "what's the difference in these classes?" He said, "Boy, there ain't no difference. When a big storm comes, they all going to blow away." But, you know, one of my biggest points is, these people, just like the gentleman that just spoke, he came down here, kind of touched base on what he spoke about on the LDR a while ago. You got people come down here, they buy a piece of property, okay? They got plans for that piece of property. They invest in that property. They pay the sewer type, they pay the water type. The county's, the city's making money off that, the county's getting the land developed, and they spend their hard-earned money to put that RV on there. When they bought that property, it was zoned, it was regulations on it, or no regulations on it, whatever it may be. Well, if it didn't have regulations on it, I don't see how you can change the regulations on a piece of property a man's done bought with a plan in mind, and he's using it for what he had a plan for. He may be planning on building on it 10 years, five years when he retires, but he still likes to use it with his kids to come down here to the beach, because that's the way he wants to retire and move down here. So if he bought that property under the understanding, when he paid for it, when he spent his hard-earned money for that property, how can y'all take his rights away? All right? I don't know, somebody, I don't know, I looked around, I like parts of your ordinance, but I really don't like much of it. I like the part of my, you know, hurricane evacuations, I know I have a little RV park, you know, and, man, I tell them when they move in there, I got a list of rules and regulations. That's my rules and regulations, because I own the land. It's not your rules and regulations, because y'all don't own the land. Mama told me when I was a little boy, she told all her customers, I grew up in the real estate business, I was a little kid hanging out with my mama selling real estate right here in Gulf County when they brought me up here. Lady said, "Well, I'm going to buy this piece of property over here. What's them people going to do with that property over there?" She told them, she said, "Well, if you want to control that piece of property over there, you better buy it, because these are the regulations on this property that you're buying. Now, if you want to build your nice big house, you better build your nice house over there in Seashores, Gulf Fair, somebody just got some regulations on it for their house." So them people do their homework, they got a plan to build them a nice house, that's what these subdivisions are for, with regulations. And like I say, I got so much more, I could go on for about a day or something, I would probably not bore you, but I know y'all don't want to spend all day talking to me.
Thank you. Dr. Hardman, come on, I think you've had your hand up, then we're going to go back here and here, and then that.
Good evening. Pat Hardman, President of Coastal Community Association, South Gulf County. Because we kicked this down the road and didn't do anything for four or five years, we ending up with a crisis situation. We are the county that doesn't have any regulations. If we went over to Walton County, this is not an issue, they can't live in it, they can't put their RV in Walton County in this wind zone area. If you go over to Franklin County, you can put it in there for two weeks at a time. We tried to come to y'all and say, "Let's be fair, what we'd like is no RVs." But let's be fair to those people that did buy, that did put them in, and try to make some exceptions and allow some grandfathering. Now, some of the things that you've added to this, allowing new purchases to come in and now have an RV, virtually throws all this out the window. There's no need to have one, you've got it so watered down, it doesn't make any difference. I would say, don't go there. Go with what we've got and the plan where you say you can do these things, you're here, you're grandfathered, you got it, but at these points, things have to change. I like your idea of, what you're really talking about zoning, y'all. I mean, bottom line, you're talking about zoning, best use of property. I disagree with Simmons' buy you being included in your exceptions for a couple of different reasons. One, I have an office building in there, and my property values don't need to be devalued. Two, it's a flood-prone area, and when you put an RV there and you don't come get it, you go wipe out my office, and I think that man said it, when a storm comes, they blow away. We need to have the regulation that they have to move before a storm. Your grandfather, let, that takes care of folks that have one now. The other thing is, you've got to come back, whether anybody likes it or not, when you put an RV on a piece of property that is a value difference, a tremendous value difference, a cape piece of property, that is high-value piece of property, and you put an RV next to it, you devalue the property. Therefore, you're hurting the owner. Therefore, you're hurting the owner. I'm sorry, it's asking you a favor, okay? If I put the same value, if I put, if I put the same RV on a piece of property, I can raise the value of surrounding properties if I'm putting the nicest RV in there. So you've got people that live here full-time, that have stick-built houses, that are built by the code, because they're in the wind zone, we pay extra to have to build those houses in that code, they can't be built on the ground, we have to have them elevated. All of a sudden, you're coming in and making exceptions for about 2% of the total population as opposed to helping the 98% of us who have stick-built homes. So you're making an exception for something that is a danger in a flood zone. I don't know how to say it any other way. You're going to devalue the property out on these higher ends, you're going to end up with me having a danger. Talked to an insurance person the other day, if the proliferation gets much worse, we can have insurance issues, not being able to have our stick-built homes insured or pay a higher price because of it. So if you want to talk zoning, talk zoning, but I don't think Simmons' buy you ought to be included, we've got the same problem there of getting people out, we've got one access egress coming out. Y'all did help us keep the place open, but we still got one, and we've got flood, and we've got water, and we've got a tourist quarter going out there, and that property doesn't need to be one mobile home after, one RV after. But we need some safety, we need some protection. We're asking you for protection as us live here full-time, pay taxes, live in stick-bills, and appreciate our value if our property is being sustained or not devalued.
Commissioners, with the public comment, and like I said, some folks will come up, I just wanted to address the issue, if it's specific to what's happening. Like I said, there's a benefit of five years' discussion on this issue, and I know tonight everybody's here to talk about it, but if there's something that's been discussed in the past, I want to bring it to your attention. There's comments and discussion about if you want certain regulations, you live in a subdivision with deed restrictions. And you heard Dr. Hardman refer to zoning. Zoning regulations and land use are changed in every community across this country all the time. It's not stagnant, it changes with the communities as they change. Gulf County's changing, so do the land use regulations. And so it's not impermissible, it's not illegal for you all to look at the issues and as the county grows, adapt your land development regulations to it. We have homeowners associations, they say you can and can't do certain things, you buy it with the understanding that you're allowed to do certain things or build a certain way. Unincorporated Gulf County that is not in subdivisions or HOAs, they have board directors for their HOAs. You are the board of directors for this community and the unincorporated portions of Gulf County. That is why you have a comp plan, and that is why you have LDRs. Those are your restrictions, and you are able to change them from time to time. You did it tonight with Leave No Trace, you did it tonight with LDR. And so you, as a board... And so, you as a board of directors, look at the issue, you have the ability, there's issues of zoning, we bring it up. Commissioners, you all have your feelings on zoning, so do the community. Right now, short of zoning, this is an issue to put a regulation in place. As I, as you have it in front of you right now, we've covered, I said, the entire spectrum. What you have in front of you is you have various options, okay? There's a balance, and I keep going back to it, we talked about balance on all these ordinances, on all these resolutions, and all these policies you all adopt. The balance in this is striving that the state law requires everybody in this county to build a certain way, for public safety. Everyone, by law, and our county enforces it. Vehicles or non-permanent structures along this corridor have no regulations. They're not required, they're also not built nor intended for permanent dwelling. The county allows it, the recreational vehicles. The regulations that is in front of you right now, and everyone in this room, I presume, owns property, either a home, or an RV, or a parcel in Gulf County. And what you have in front of you, that one piece of paper versus the old ordinance and the new one, addresses everyone in Gulf County that's purchased a piece of property will continue to be able to use an RV anywhere in the county. And your LDRs apply as they do today, they'll apply tomorrow, setbacks, parking spaces. But I go back to the balance issue, and I'm only addressing it because it's been five years of discussion. The homeowner's all built to a state law, and there's nothing with regards to a dwelling on a property without a state Florida Building Code structure. And so, that balance that I'm speaking of, is the original ordinance that you have in front of you speaks about evacuating for six months. Now, it says evacuate for only the few days per year that you have inclement weather that is not built to state law. So, there's a balance, and it's homeowners versus recreational vehicles. If you define the corridor within a mile, and the state law tells us all we have to build a certain way, to Mr. Arnold's point, you are the board of directors, you do set the land use regulations in this county, you do define what can and can't for the betterment of the public policy, you have under statute 125 the ability to do these things, and the one page in front of you now speaks to everyone in this county can continue to come. Anybody that purchased a piece of property after today can still come with an RV, they'll have to get a recreational vehicle use, and they can use it for up to a month. Anybody that purchased prior to today that's in this room can continue to come. The only thing that this ordinance asks is that they respect the public safety and the evacuation of a non-permanent structure within this corridor. And then, when it's gone, they can bring it back, and they can register it once a year. And those three are the only three requirements in that piece of paper in front of you.
And Mr. Chairman, so, and they, and they continue to have that right until they transfer title or pass away?
Don't evacuate.
And if they don't evacuate, could we, could we put in that the first time it's a fine, and then the second time it's a loss of the... Because I am concerned that we may be the cause of them not being able to get in here and evacuate. I have been in evacuation zones, and you cannot get in sometimes. And if we create that issue, then I, I would be concerned that we prevent them from coming in. And I wanted to clarify something too, with Dr. Hardman, and I don't know if I understood you correctly, but when I said that they should be able to have a new RV, my point is, if they already have a lot and they're grandfathered in, that I don't think we should incentivize them to have to stay in an old RV, and they should be able to have a new RV until they lose their grandfather. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't misunderstand you, okay? Right, but I don't, I don't agree with, and I don't agree with new property owners. I just wanted to make sure we were...
Mr. Chairman, to your point, it would be to the, we heard a comment two weeks ago about someone wanting to upgrade, it would be to the use, and you're grandfathered in as long as you purchase property, you could continually use it for recreational vehicle and upgrade, and buy a new one, bring another one in each year, as long as you register it when you come down each year. Or if you leave it here all year round, and we have no evacuations, you can leave it on that property all year.
And if you leave, and you come on the weekend, and then you leave, and you, and the RV is there, and you're not in it, then we're okay?
Yeah, and I just offer this for your consideration, Commissioner, you were talking about if they don't come down, other communities in Florida, there are in businesses where you sign a contract and you say, "You've gotta move it, I can't get there, I'm in Wisconsin." And there's also our special magistrate, Michelleen Grover, she's gonna hear these, and so when we enforce it, we go before her, she makes a final ruling.
Okay, so they're gonna have redress.
And they'll have an opportunity to say, "I had a contract in place, and it was a breach of contract, and I did everything with due diligence and for public safety, and I paid someone to do this." And then, the judge has the opportunity to take those mitigating circumstances into consideration, but it shows that they had the public safety concern, they also have the ability, and the county also has the exemption and the hardship. So, there's outlets for the county to deal with special fact patterns than just someone not evacuating and staying there RV.
Thank you.
I think we're pretty much here for goodwill. I'll press one, maybe two at the most. Going over the same repetition, come on, I'll... I don't wanna get this thing some mushroomed out, and we just can it back here five years from now.
Okay, Jeremy, a little clarification if you don't mind. So, if someone buys a lot right now, they can put an RV pad on it and bring their RV back and forth?
Yes.
So, there's no restriction on that?
Until we adopt this ordinance.
No, no, okay, I mean, but we're the new, I'm talking about if we pass the ordinance, that will prohibit that in the future.
Well, Dawn, it depends on what they adopt tonight.
I mean, what you've, what you've proposed, what you've proposed...
Would they be able to come and go? Yes.
Would a new person, person be able to buy a lot and put a...
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, after today? If someone, the, the whole issue, Dawn, and for the public, is constructive notice. And there's people saying, "I bought here 10 years ago, you got emails, I bought here 30 years ago, I bought here 10 days ago." When they bought, they say, "My Realtor advertised it this way," or "I was told one thing." The cap, Gulf County doesn't advertise and market properties, okay? So, that's private business. But going forward, this board then says, "You're on constructive notice that Gulf County now has an amended ordinance and an LDR that says these are the regulations going forward." So, anybody after today, if they adopted that, would be prohibited from placing permanently an RV within a mile of the coast, barring the 28 days that they could come down under permits in the county.
Okay, but this is, this is, well, we're not clear. So, but they, they could come down and put an RV on that for two weeks, they could drive down and use that for two weeks.
Yes.
But that's, that's our problem. That's where we're losing our tax dollars, that's our tax base.
I, I think, I think what we're trying to do is get something in place, Dawn, and that's what Franklin County does too. I mean, we looked at other counties, surrounding counties, they allow somebody, if they purchased that property, and they wanna place a RV on it for two weeks, they allow them to do it for two weeks. I think this one says, is it 30 days?
It's two 14-day permits.
Two 14-day permits. All you're allowing them to do is use their, their lot, uh...
Twice, that's a whole year.
Twice a year. It's not like they're coming up and permanently setting up a, an RV and living in it like they can now. And so, we're starting with that restriction.
But would they be able to put up a new RV pole on that lot to service that for two weeks, or they just come and stay somewhere for two weeks? I mean, isn't that kind of the issue? That it becomes, I hear people use the term RV lot, and there is no such thing as an RV lot, there's a lot that has an RV or items on it that accommodate an RV, but RV lots are only lots that are in RV parks or RV subdivisions. So, we have lots that have RV poles, I believe that we call them. And so, my question would be, after this, if this is passed, would someone buy a lot and put an RV pole on to come and park there two weeks, or whatever the provision adds for?
Under what I provided to you right now? The answer would be, if someone comes to Gulf County after today and purchases a lot within a mile of the coast, they are clearly on notice that it is for recreational purposes only up to 28 days a year, and know there's, there's no pole, because the people with permanent residents and RVs in Gulf County are people that own and use them prior to, for today or prior. And those people are grandfathered for that permanent dwelling, if you will. And then, they're the only ones allowed to do that, because they purchased the property prior to this going through.
So, the permits that we were talking about, they're really for visitors, or, you know, my son comes by and likes to visit me for two weeks in his RV, it's more for that type of use. The, the permits that you provided for, the two-week permits, the two recreational 14-day permits, that's really for someone who comes in and visits in an RV? Okay. I think, isn't that what you're getting at? Is it some, is it a permanent?
Dawn, I think what you're wanting, the way I understand what you're wanting, is that...
Not just me, I, I, if we look back at just a minute, we had, at the CCA meeting on Saturday, I actually stood at the door and tried to catch as many people coming in the door to give their opinion on what they wanted. And overwhelming everybody that walked through the door, except for three people that abstained, was, you know, "We want an ordinance, you know, we need restrictions, we don't want RV lots up and down Cape San Bryce Road." And I'm sure all of our beaches are the same way, Indian Pass, they're all feeling the same way. So, what can we do to protect our, our tax base is my big thing? You know, we've got our tax base, and we've got the safety, we've got lots of issues here, but I think that, you know, I think how we support our whole county is at, is at risk here, because we have, you know, poles out there, and then we have, you know, a pole with a showerhead on it, right next to it, you know, and so that's, and they come and they park, and, you know, and it's okay, I mean, you, a lot of use your RV, I love RVs too, but, you know, to have it set up next to an $800,000 house that's bringing in TDC dollars and tax dollars, you know, and, and, you know, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a huge value to our economy, and, you know, we need to protect that. You know, that's, that's a, if we start our, and I talked to an appraisal two weeks ago myself at a property, and he said, you know, "We've got a problem," you know, and he, he's a resident of our county, and he also said, you know, "We've gotta do something, because, you know, we're, this is a huge tax base we have here, and we gotta protect it." So, can't do anything else. But, you know, it's, oh, and the other, okay, we have one more thing, so if you...
Okay, you got about four seconds. We'll be paying.
So, if you have one thought, if you come and go on the weekends still? Yes, yes. If you're in the grandfather clause, you can come and go. Okay.
Yep.
Until you lose it. I think the idea is that when we grandfather folks in, we have to make it where they can function. It's not right for us to make it so stringent that these folks that have come here and they have their RVs, they've done what they were supposed to do, we cannot make it so stringent that they cannot function.
Let me go over here. Mr. Turney, did you want to make a comment here? I'm sorry, I'm just saying. All right, I'm gonna introduce you. One more. I think we've, uh, gonna wind up killing this thing, what's gonna happen. Who wants to come? Come on, young lady.
Maury Digby, Highland View. Um, thank you for hearing me. I sympathize, I understand about the million-dollar home, I understand what you're saying. I live in Highland View, we chose to live in that area. Um, I did a real quick assessment of all the property in my block and the blocks, and my vacant lot with the motor home on, I mean, with my camper on it is really, you know, has a higher tax base assessment than some of the properties in my area. We have wonderful neighbors, they embraced us when we came, they look after our place, they gave us gifts, they're good people, and it's, it's, it's a poor little community, but they're good people. And, um, we chose to live in that area, we followed all the rules and regulations, I'm a school teacher, and this is my haven for sanity on the weekend. I just wanna come sleep in my camper that's on my property on the weekends, I wanna fish in the bay and just enjoy the county. I don't have the money to stay in your homes for a week or a day, and I can't afford property on your land. I'm just asking that, in Highland View, in my little piece of the world, where I have finally been able to spend my retirement money, that I'm allowed to come and just enjoy my piece of property. And I appreciate Jeremy for all the work that he's done on this, to try to meet us in the middle on this. The only thing I'm a little worried about is that, you know, I'm getting on up there a few years, and I hope I can survive my last three years of teaching and get down here and retire, but when I pass on, I'd love for my kids to be able to come on, we've raised our kids as Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and I don't know how to ride an elevator to a high-rise, I gotta keep my feet on the ground and the face in the sun, and I just, I wanna be able to just pass it on to my kids, if that's at all possible. But if it's not, I'll put a little... I just think it's time to make consideration of all the work you've done, I really do.
I'm gonna see this gentleman here in blue shirt.
Here. Thank you, Commissioners, Clay Lewis, 4452 Cape San Bryce Road. Could I...
Sure, Clay.
Give these to you before my time starts.
You can share one, get one over there, can I? I want it for you. Thanks, Clay. Hey, Clay, what, wait a minute, reset the timer, it's running to your, you gotta start. Clay, is there a certain page you wanna start on here?
Um...
We can follow along with you?
Actually, I gave Mr. Novak my copy of those pages. We've heard a lot about opinions on values and how values are assessed, and this, that, and the other. I've got some, some properties here, but the first property is directly across the street from mine. It just sold on 922 at one of the highest prices per square foot after the post-recession. It's roadfront. The second property is a beachfront house that's not visible of any campers whatsoever. It's probably 25% less and probably 25% more square footage.
In the, in the same location, Clay?
No, this is about a mile down the road, uh, right in post, the, the sales price is on there. The third, the third property and the fourth property are owned by the same individual. The, the third piece of paper is his house, the, the next adjoining lot, he actually bought for an RV lot, and has developed an RV lot on that parcel with y'all's permission. I don't think somebody would buy a property and put a, put a RV lot next to them if it was directly affecting their property values negatively. There are a lot of things that affect property values. For instance, the lack of a beach FEMA, lack of having FEMA, you know, beach erosion, foreclosures, there are many, many, many things that affect value. Many of the houses in this county that were built in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s were not structured under today's Building Code. They are just as vulnerable, if not much more so, than the RVs that are located in this county. Personally, my RV, or ARV on my lot, has been there almost 20 years and never been moved. So, the history tells me, and I, you know, I'm gonna move for a storm too, but, you know, those RVs could be tied down just like mobile homes that weren't, weren't, uh, regulated back in the, in the 60s, 70s, 80s, all that kinda stuff. The other thing that, that I see is the grandfather clause has been very restrictive. One, one small other piece.
You're standing up very tight.
Um, I've heard a...
Okay, you wanna get a motion, Brandon, one more time?
Look, let him finish this though.
All right, all right, you all throw your train here, we'll give you a minute.
This was unworkable last time, and I feel that's unworkable this time, and I think that it needs to be thrown out just like the last time. Thank you.
Maybe Commissioner Macklemore would like to broach those areas one at a time, and maybe we can carve some of those areas out.
I can do that.
Please get started there.
Do, we wanna do that now?
Well, yeah, let me just, let me make a comment, and then we can do that now, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. This issue was tough four years ago, and it is tough now, and it's an issue that we have just got to address. I mean, there's, there's no question, we have got to do something. We can't allow it to keep happening. We've heard, we've heard for the past couple of public hearings, and believe me, I've We've heard, we've heard for the past couple of public hearings and believe me, I've heard on the telephone and through email, a lot of different opinions. And I told the Coastal Community Association Saturday, you know, there's a lot of different people living in this, in this county and I can tell you, you've got a lot of different ideas about what we should do and what we shouldn't do. So this is going to be tough. No matter which way this boards go, some people aren't going to be happy with it and some people are. And, and, or maybe nobody will be happy with it, but it'll be a happy medium, hopefully. And that's what we're trying to get to. And I think, be honest with you, what, what the attorney has, has drafted here through these public hearings and through these emails, really, it, it touches to all the issues. I've always been a guy, I think, that I want as limited government intervention in my life as I can possibly have. However, sometimes government has to intervene to protect the rights of all the residents and that's what we're trying to do here. So I would think that, Mr. Chairman, we could, we could actually take this particular page, address Mr. McLemore's issues about which way, which ones that he wants to carve out and then take this page and adopt this, adopt this as we, as we see, as we stand with this. And I would, I would just say, you know, we've, we've heard all the opinions. Every one of us could get up here and talk an hour about this. And I believe that I've heard so many different opinions, I could argue both sides. I could, I could do that. But I'm ready, I'm ready to, and I think that we need to do something moving forward and, you know, that's just my thoughts and I think the attorney wanted to say something.
I made a move on this.
Just one general comment. If you're going to make discussions about, right now you've defined one mile from the mean high water. As your attorney, I'm going to offer the comments to you and then you all define what public safety and the whereas clauses in the first two and a half pages apply or don't apply. One thing I want to caution you all against is, we heard the word zoning. One thing I want to caution against is, against is spot zoning. First and foremost, you pick and choose places. If you pick and choose places, I'd ask the commission to justify it, to say that these areas that you're pulling out, if you do, don't apply for the same flooding and wind events that you're applying it to. And so if you make the motion to pull them out, if you can justify them, to distinguish them under your whereas clauses. Right now you've defined a mile inland on the coast of Gulf County because of wind, flood events. Okay? If you pull out areas within that mile corridor now, I'd ask you just to justify it that those areas are not, distinguish them from the areas of concern for flood and wind and water events. And that, you, just for public policy, I'd ask you that we're not spot zoning in Gulf County, we're actually distinguishing those areas, that they're not the same vulnerability.
Wait, Jeremy, let me ask, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Question for the attorney.
Yes, sir.
Would Cape San Blas get into that picture for Highland View, Oak Grove?
The, the, all of Cape San Blas, all of Highland View, all of Oak Grove are within that mile corridor.
Would that give us leeway to pull those out? Protect-
Yeah, that, that is for you five to decide. That's why I'm asking you for all to give us that interpretation.
I'm the weatherman.
Yes, sir. And that's why I'm saying if you're going to take a defined area within a mile along Gulf County, it's universally applied to the entire county. If you're going to pull provisions out, then I'm asking the commission to state affirmatively that you're distinguishing a portion of the coastline is different than another portion of the coastline in terms of vulnerability.
Okay, I, I hear you.
Yeah.
I hear you. I got it now. I got, I know how to do it.
You know how to do it? Oh, you fixing to make a motion?
I, I got one motion on the table and I'm going to have to pull it, but I want to make another motion. What I want to do, but I know how, I know what he want.
I'm scared you're making a motion. I want to make a motion. Or you make a motion.
I just want to add one more provision to that. Earlier we discussed leave no trace and LDRs and we talked about litigation, okay? The county's vulnerability. In 19 years, we had one suit that came up on the LDRs. We're moving forward, you adopted the LDRs. I'm, as your attorney, obviously we don't want to expose the county to future suit. We have one on that past ordinance. On this, I'm saying in terms of spot zoning, those are things that can be challenged by property owners if there is a distinction between universally applying this and picking spots throughout the county. So in terms of, I'd ask you for clear justifications as to if you're going to go beyond the mile to what those are so I can then defend it going forward.
May I? I, I don't, I think that we have to have some, you're saying clear justifications, but you mean that they have to be actual justifications that we know. We can't just say that, that it's justified. You're saying it has to be justified, so we need to be very cautious with that. I have no knowledge.
Commission-
Maybe another commissioner on this board does, but I have no knowledge that carves those out because of tides or, I just don't have that knowledge.
Four years ago, this commission applied the tourist corridor to this application because you had to find a area in the county of the main corridors and you said that's not applicable, okay? They came back and the building department, the planning department have all now applied this. And the zone is defined by your Florida building code. They applied it from Florida statute and Florida administrative code. So you're saying, how do you distinguish it? So the county came back and the staff now, they're defining it by Florida statute. That mile is defined and supported by something on the books and you all clarified that tonight. If you go beyond that now, I'm asking, that's where we're going back outside that clarification and that's what I need from this commission. What is the justification beyond the Florida building code for why you're doing that?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, uh-
Yep.
Let me do this.
I'm listening.
All right, I want to, I want to pull my original motion. Original motion was to exclude Highland View, Oak Grove and Money Bayou.
Simmons Bayou.
Simmons Bayou. That was my original motion.
Which excluded Jones Homestead.
Jones Homestead, yeah. Let's throw that out the window. What I'd like to do now, and I'll put this on a motion, we'll do it one at a time. We'll do, we'll do, I'd like to exclude Highland View because the, the peninsula helps protect the wind zone. When, when we have major flooding, we have intercoastal waterway there that the waters come up through the intercoastal. Mr. Turney, you listening to this?
Yes, sir.
So, are those justifications? So that's my motion. We have the intercoastal, we have the, we have the peninsula for protection.
I, I just-
Is that, is that true?
Can I ask a question? In terms of the, again, as an attorney, when you transfer titles to property, you have legal meets and bounds. You know the four corners of a piece of property or three corners of a property, whatever it may be. My question then is, we know a mile from the mean high water is a clearly defined universal application. If you're going to say that there's three neighborhoods in Gulf County, I know historically we all know Simmons Bayou, we all know Highland View, we all know Oak Grove. It's unincorporated Gulf County. If there is four corners that define those, then that is easily enforced and interpreted. If there isn't, then I'd ask the county commission to provide the staff with what are the four corners of Simmons Bayou? And that, and that, so we need that clarity because right now what we're doing is we have a clear line and if we go outside that, I'd ask the commission to provide us what that, that, that legal description of that property is.
You've got, you've got me so confused. I'm okay. I sit here five years ago and I went through all of this and I finally made a motion to throw it all out the window and that's what I'm fixing to make now.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, you know, I've made all, I'm going to fake heat for this anyway. You, you dice it because, because my, my district and Commissioner Thoreau's district is most affected by this. But we have got to do something. This is a good addition to what we've done. We've, we've provided that everybody is, is, is grandfathered in. For those folks that have come down and spent the $10,000 that they did for their sewer system and the water and all those kinds of things and made their lot nice, we've provided you with, with an out here. We've grandfathered you in. You can continue to use your, uh, to use your property as you, as you bought it. And, and that's the most fairest thing that I think that we can do. I don't even know if Franklin County did that. So we're providing the grandfather clause. With this, with this other addition, which, which basically the public doesn't have, but you read, Jeremy, it fits in with everything that I can think of that the public discussed and their concerns and those type things. So I'm going to put a form, a, a, a motion on that we adopt this ordinance with the changes, with this one-page change that our, our attorney put in and let's move forward with this. And there's no doubt, six months down the road, we're going to look at this and we're going to say, you know what, we need to adjust this or we need to do this or we need to do that and we can with public input. But we've provided for everybody an out. Everybody that had a concern, we've provided you an out. And I think we've got to prevent future developments of just RV lots in this coastal zone or in this one mile zone. And with that, my motion stands as, as, as stated.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second that motion, but ask for the addition of the corporation LLC and trust language to subdivision A.
That, that's fine. I, I'll-
That they cannot-
If I can, the, the grandfather would be to specific individual names, not corporate entities. So if someone does hold in the corporate name, if I can add just a suggestion that on the application for the permit in that first year, it defines who the individual is that's receiving that grandfather provision instead of a corporation with 25 corporate members.
That's fine, provided we have that language to secure that. If you would just amend-
That's, that's fine.
Okay, and my second stance, thank you.
Any further board discussion? I don't like it. I don't like it's fair. I will not support it. Couldn't tell you. All right, any, uh, yeah. He withdrew, he withdrew the other. She's right. I withdrew one motion. I made another motion.
Which one?
I did.
What was the other?
What was that?
It was, let's hold up here. We got to get this clarified.
You made a motion strictly for Highland View.
Absolutely. And gave my explanation like the attorney asked for. All right. The second then to Commissioner McLemore's motion to exclude Highland View. I hear a motion exclude Highland View. Not, motion fails for lack of a second.
Let me restate again. We're protecting Highland View. We are protecting the people of Highland View and we're protecting the people of, of Oak Grove and, and we're protecting the people of Saint Joe Beach and all over. We're, we're giving them the grandfather clause and because of that, I, I'm, I'm good with this. We've got to do something. I'll take the heat for it and, and I make that motion that we proceed with, with this, with this one-page addition.
And I will second it and we are protecting Highland View and we cannot, our attorney just advised us that we cannot arbitrarily spot, carve someone out of an ordinance. So we cannot do it. So I'm going to second Commissioner Yeager's motion.
Let me, uh, make a comment before I go to the public on that. Three years ago, we were here, we killed it because we can hear wanted their little rule and regulations and we move on down to, uh, Saint Joe Beach, they wanted their little world, Highland View wanted their little world, Oak Grove wanted theirs, the Cape wanted theirs, Indian Pass, so we just said, that's it. Got to come up with something universal. You start slicing out, they're protected. Mr. Said, we wind up a bunch of lawsuits. This place said, wait a minute, you gave it to them, not us. You know, we, we're just as important as they are. Need to keep it universal here and we can always go back and address some of these. Why not go into the north end of Canada, Mr. McNamara? Do the whole county.
We'll do that.
Do the whole county.
Well, and, and the grandfather clause has been expanded, so you are not going to be, that you have to be in there, you have to be in there continually, you can't leave and come back. That, all of that is relaxed. So if you are here in your RV, you can function with your RV. You can go back to Georgia or Alabama and you could come here and enjoy your RV. That is all in place here. And I'm, I'm certain if this motion passes, that our attorney will revise the ordinance and it will be available on the website for everyone to see.
I got to go here. Any more board discussion? Any public discussion? Public comment? Hey man, you got to come to the podium. If me and my wife own that lot in Highland View together, if I die before hers-
Name, sir.
Paul Digby in Highland View. If me and my wife own the lot together, if I die, which is more likely than her, she's got to move off. Okay, okay. All right, John.
Joint tenancy?
Um-
Joint tenancy? We'll put a provision in if that's going to-
Yes, that's in the motion.
Right. And if, if two folks own the lot now, even if it's, um, you know, it doesn't have to be a husband and wife, if two people are on the title now and they both own the RV, then one dies, one still owns the lot and the RV, so you're still there.
I appreciate y'all letting me come up again and also appreciate y'all spending as much time on this because it is a very important decision. One of the questions I had, I kind of agree with Carmen a little bit, maybe just throw this thing out, but don't seem like that's going to happen because we do need some rules and regulations. I think I heard Mr. Yeager, couple of, uh, maybe December 8 meeting y'all had somewhere about then, that said y'all had ordinances, but you never enforced them. Why don't you go back to doing that? Why don't you start with that? You know?
That's what's going to happen. We can't enforce-
Y'all can't enforce what y'all had, why don't y'all want to do something else? Other thing I had for, uh, Ms. Brian, she keeps bringing up this trust and I don't know how many people out here belong to a trust or a part of a trust or got a trust, but I don't think I understand what you're saying when you're saying, don't let a trust do something. I, I, I don't understand because a trust is a trust is a trust and I mean, these people set up a trust, great grandma set up a trust.
I can explain.
Okay. Don't take this out of my free minutes.
Take your, hold your time. You want, you want to address this, Mr. Turney? On this?
You, you can-
I'm just trying to understand now. I ain't making trouble. I'm just trying to understand. Because I'm involved in this.
The county, for grandfathering purposes, are going to identify the individuals who own the property, not an entity formed or a corporation or a trust. Trust is you, John, and a sibling and the sibling, the, the grandfather provision applies to those two individual names. It doesn't say the trust you can amend.
To me, it's a trust that somebody else set up and I'm a trustee and I can touch the money. I mean, I can do nothing to trust them. I don't get nothing out of the trust. I'm just a trustee, own a trust.
Then it would be the beneficiary. The point is that lawyers find ways around everything.
Talk about yourself about that.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, I, I can place my property into a trust and have it continue on and on. Same thing with an LLC, that I have it in an LLC, that I can transfer title, I can transfer my LLC to you and the title on the land didn't change, but I sold you my LLC and you got my lot because it is an asset of the LLC.
Because that's the law.
So, right, that is the law. So when we're drafting this ordinance, the point of the grandfather clause is that it's personal to you or you and your wife or you and your brother or whoever is on title. But if you had it in an LLC and you and your brother, let's say, owned it and you transferred, you transferred your LLC, not the title to the land, but the LLC to Mr. Novak and Mr. Butler, then you transferred title, but the name on the title didn't change. And we don't want to provide that as a loophole. It's closing a loophole.
Well, I kind of understand what you say, but just like y'all mentioned earlier, that you got situations and different events that require different rules and regulations. This is actually a, a educational trust. So I doubt I'm going to benefit much from that because, you know, I mean, I'm not really a beneficiary. It's a educational trust, even though there are properties involved in the trust.
And if it becomes an issue for you, you can go through the process in front of Ms. Bover as Mr. Novak was.
Okay, don't cut me off because I think everybody's going to want to know this one. This doesn't bill me individually. Okay? I got another question. Mr. Novak had mentioned when somebody sells their lot, then that doesn't carry over. Okay, I understand that.
Talking about the grandfather.
The grandfather. We keep talking about this grandfather and when they sell that lot, it doesn't go. So then your new regulations come in on that lot. Okay, understood. Okay. Now what about this guy? Now he's grandfathered in, what about the guy that's bought the lot for an RV and his RV's not on there yet? But he bought that RV because you just said when it, I'm sorry, Mr. Novak just said when it sells. It didn't say nothing about when they bought, he, now, I'm sorry, I take that back. When he said when they bought the lot, they were under the understanding that that was the new rules. Okay? What about if they already own it? Or is it, as he said, as he explained it to this group of people here, that it's when[1773.04] Or is it, as he said, as he explained it to this group of people here, that it's when he, when they sell that lot, or it changes hands, then the regulation takes effect? But he didn't say nothing about before. So there's a wide open thing right there that wasn't answered at all.
If, if you own the piece of property in Gulf County today, you're grandfathered. If you buy it tomorrow, you're no longer grandfathered.
Great, that's, I just wanna make that clarified to everybody here. Okay, so they can still get their RV and put it on their property?
I gotta call.
All right, okay. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
All right, I got about, we've been here all night. Lady, come on up.
You can clarify it. May I clarify that? So, I need to clarify, so you're saying that if, if I own a lot, but it, it is not an RV, it's not prepared for an RV that I'm grandfathered in, or if I own a lot that already has the RV pole?
There, I'm not aware of a way that this county or this commission can define if a site is RV-ready. Is it a pad? Is it a pole? Is it a septic? Is it a sewer? Is it a setback? The, the, the language currently is, if you own property within the mile corridor, it is for the restriction of the use, not for the current condition. So today, if you own a piece of property within the mile corridor, going forward, it can still be used, and is grandfathered in for that use. If you don't have an RV on your piece of property within the corridor today, you can still bring your RV down as long as you're grandfathered in, and you purchased the property. But you do not need to have the RV on the property today to be grandfathered in. It's the use, not the condition, not the current condition of the property, it's the use.
So we will still issue the RV poles? I'm told there's an RV pole permit, or, maybe George could clarify.
There is an RV pole permit, absolutely.
If you own your property prior to today within that corridor, then you're grandfathered in for that use, and that use has abilities to pull a pole permit.
And they can receive a pole, sure.
Clear on that? Come down and, come down, all the realtors.
Anybody in Gulf County within a mile of the corridor that currently owns property can continue to come down with recreational vehicles, as long as they don't do two, three things. And the first two are very obvious, and the third is that they don't comply with the law that you adopt, which is a mandatory evacuation. Those are the only three ways that property owners in Gulf County will lose their privilege when right to bring a recreational vehicle, a non-permit structure within a mile of the coast. Those are the only three ways.
Here, young lady.
We're at a Hartside, 329 Bonita Street, just bought a lot in, in August of this past year. We have not spent one night on it. I mean, we did one night. We didn't even, we don't even have the power on it yet, but we, we're getting there, okay? We have come, and we have been here for like eight years, renting an RV place in El Governor, and paid high prices to be there, and had to rush every weekend to make it, to come here to fish and do what we wanted to do. Now, we didn't have, we don't have to do that. We can, we've got our own place, we wanna be able to use it like we want to. I don't see why we can't have Highland View, Oak Grove, and whatever else he said, because it is a more protected area than it is the Cape. I do believe that that can be done without an issue of any kind of lawsuit going on, because it is a protected area, is never, I have not known it to flood. People are there, twenty years, they've been twenty years, I've never known it to flood there. I've, I've got realtor friends that say that it's not in a flood zone there. It is close to the water, but I, but people there, I mean, we've talked to people, they're common labor workers, and I, we're, we're, we're actually improving that area, and, and we wanna, we wanna be able to do that, and I'd love to leave my children that lot, because it is a hundred by fifty lot, which you can't do anything on hardly, but just have an RV or a trailer, manufactured home, or whatever. And I just wanna say that I am for Mr. Macklemore and what he said, and I think it can be done. I think we're no comparison to Cape Sandblasts and Indian Pass. There is, it is not a beautiful area, it's not eye appealing like that. I have pigs and chickens in my backyard from another neighbor, and I don't care, but I mean, I'm not a Cape Sandblasts person. I mean, you know, and, and I think we should be respected too, because we're not, we're common laborers, and we work hard for our money, and we're financing this, we're not writing a check for it. And we, we're not bringing the, we're not bringing the value of property down, we're bringing it up.
You, you do know, as proposed, you're gonna continue to be able to do that, as long as you and your husband will.
I understand that, but I still know that future reasons, there won't be any, there will not be any way to do that.
I, I'll be honest with you, I wanted to carve out Oak Grove and Highland View, but it seems like on the advice of the attorney, that if we do that, that's gonna open up a challenge to the whole-
There's a way, that it can be done, and I bet he can do it, because like you said, lawyers can do things that go around them, that can be done, and I promise you, that there can be a reason why. The Oak Grove and Highland View can be excluded without it being an issue.
Tell me, tell me how to do it, and I done it.
Well, I'm sorry, but I have to say, and I couldn't sleep tonight if I hadn't gotten up here. I'm not a person that can speak in front of people, but I do have to take my heart, and we are just excited to be where we are, and we want to stay there. And my children come here every year to go to Cape Sandblasts, and they camp out, and we have done it for, ever since my kids have been married, and they, they wanna come and enjoy ourselves, and they have a family, my grandchildren, and that's all I gotta say.
I'm on it. We've heard no much, have you calling for the vote?
I will, I'm by chairman. Are you passing the chair over to me?
I'm just asking. I'm calling for the vote here.
I'm ready.
Here all night. Listen, I'll, I'll recognize you, and that's it.
I appreciate it.
Shut the door. I think, I think y'all five's got the speech.
Things I may see some the time. The reality of it is, is that-
You wait a minute, tell her who you are.
Doug Smith, 9317 Olive Avenue. You know, when we first started this tonight, we were to vote on all this, okay? And then, what happened is, we voted on the one mile before we even talked about any of this. And I don't know if that's procedurally correct or not, because it automatically knocks out Carmen's possibilities. If we made this all sandblasts because of the egress issue with one road, it could've been just sandblasts. It wouldn't have to be a mile, you know? And then we could have segmented the county because of that, not because of the hurricane, but just that egress will be the hurricane, you know, the possibility. We could've done that, and then kept all this over here for the RVs. And I don't know if that procedure is correct, by circumventing part of it to begin with, without hearing the comments from the public. You, you see what I'm saying? And, and I, I just don't know, but I just wanna put that up here.
I'm calling for the vote, Mr. Chairman. All right. Calling for the vote. We're gonna vote on this, uh, all right, let's-
I'll tell you one thing.
Clarification, restate, reread the motion.
Motion is to adopt the ordinance with the one-page addition that Jeremy Novak presented to us.
Attorney presented, the motion was by Commissioner Yeager, am I correct?